Excuse me. As Chair of the Pembroke School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing a public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Cisco WebEx for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. And the password is capital V U Q J B 8 G K Q 5 2. And that's available on sau53.org under the Remote School Board Meetings banner. We also provide a public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using WebEx or through your telephone. Instructions have also been posted and provided on the website, sau53.org. We're also providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has access problems, please email Sandy Valine. That's S V A L I N E at sau53.org. And finally, in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done on a roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Anne.
I'm here. I'm alone, but I have 20 baby chickens that you might hear quite loudly in the room. Sorry.
Thank you. April.
Present, alone in a room.
Jean.
Present, and I'm alone.
Amy.
Present, and alone. No chickens for me.
Thanks, and this is Andy, and I am also alone. One quick note, this is a little bit awkward because we had to adjourn the last meeting due to letter D in that emergency notification. So the motion that was made was that we suspend the meeting and continue at another time. So we will pick up where we left off. There were a few in the queue to speak, so we're going to, if they are on the call tonight, we're going to give them a chance to speak. We were already over the 10-minute limit for the public comments, so we'll give those folks a chance, and then we're going to move on to the next agenda item. So if you're following along at home, we are at the tail end of Agenda Item 2A. Chris is our host tonight and has the list of names. So Chris, if those folks are available, you can go ahead and give them the floor.
Great. First up, I have Elizabeth Richards. Elizabeth, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Yes, okay, perfect. Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Richards. I live in Pembroke, New Hampshire, on Jack's Drive. And I wanted to, first of all, thank the school board for having such a long, open session in the last meeting, letting so many of us speak, so many people speak. I want to reiterate that I really hope that the Board will vote for a hybrid plan. I think that is the plan that best allows us to follow the CDC guidelines and the Department of Health guidelines. And it is the plan that came from our administrators. And so that is what my family is hoping for, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Next up is Kelly Alberico.
Kelly, are you with us?
She was a few minutes ago. We can move ahead. George Wing Jr., we can come back to Kelly if she comes back on. George, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm speaking for myself and on behalf of my wife, Shana, who couldn't be here this evening. We reiterated in the first meeting, we were able to speak, and we would just like to reiterate our position that, first, we thank you very much for the difficult circumstances that you're having to deal with on all of this. We respect this open forum. It's been very informative, and I thought, I think a lot of people have been able to express some opinions on both sides of the issue, and it's largely stayed pretty tame. So well done on all counts there. I'll just quickly state that I am firmly in favor of a hybrid program where my child, who has a disability, would be able to be seen in person and socialize with kids and just get that aspect of his life back to some semblance of normalcy. I understand this doesn't come without dangers and risks. And at the same time, I feel it would be more of a danger to our children to not allow them the social development that could and would be missed by these circumstances. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you. I do see Kelly in the meeting. Kelly, if you can get on, you have the floor.
Can you guys hear me? It's my Wi-Fi. It keeps going in and out, in and out, so I apologize.
Which I can hear you.
I was there before yelling in, but it just kept cutting out. I just wanted to, I have three girls in the system. I have twins that will be going into third grade. I have a daughter that will be going into sixth grade. I am a single mom. I work full-time. I have the technology at home to help the girls in remote learning, but with the experience last year, I just can't wrap my brain around getting through another session without some sort of hybrid learning and in-school learning. All three of my girls do pretty well on their own and maintain good grades throughout their time in the system. And I saw a drastic slipping with all of them with a completely remote system. And I was just wondering where that rationalization was coming from when you see cities like New York City that had serious coronavirus cases even coming back with a full-time remote learning, whereas in Pembroke we've had zero cases? Where that 100% remote learning was deriving from?
Thank you very much.
Next on the floor is Lauren Dwyer.
Can you hear me? I had to unmute.
Yep.
Okay. First off, I would like to thank the Board for, thank you so much for deeply considering the health of our staff and our students. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate that. So what I am asking for tonight, remote works best for my child, but I do, I understand that we need choices. We need a hybrid model. So I am asking for a hybrid model. I would also encourage a decision. I personally am having difficulty calling an IEP meeting because it is impossible for all of our staff to sort of plan their classrooms, sort of a going-back-to-school program for all of our kids that have differing abilities. So please come up with something tonight, and please give us choices. And I would also encourage parents to reach out to their case managers and start working on planning those IEP meetings now. But thank you so much. I appreciate everything that you're doing, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, based on the lineup we had and the attendance list, I do not see the last two people who are set to speak.
Okay. We will move on then to...
Andy, this is April. Before we move forward, could we give preference to those two people in our second public comment?
Sure, if they join, I've got the names in front of me. If they join by that point, we can definitely do that. If I forget, please remind me, April.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
Thank you. So Agenda Item 2B is school reopening.
Andy, I'm sorry. This is Amy. I just, I feel like, given the, you know, weather-related unplanned continuance of the last meeting, we should just give folks a moment if they want to raise their hand and add public comment tonight.
I guess, if the Board wants that, Amy, you could make a motion. And if we could, if you could please put a time limit on that motion, it would be helpful.
Could, I'm happy to do that, but why do we need a motion? We have public comment on the agenda.
I guess I don't technically know. The public comment on the agenda was held over from last time, and we were already over the time limit listed on the agenda, so I don't particularly care. I'd like, at least like, the input of the other Board members.
I would support extending public comments if Amy should make that motion for this section, whether that be for an additional 10 or 15 minutes.
This is Anne. I would support that also.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Let's aim for 10 minutes. You know, we want to hear from as many people as possible, but this is also, we'll say, a very heavy agenda. It looks short. There's not very many items on here, but the school reopening 2B is going to be a long, long presentation from a lot of different people. So to respect everybody's time, let's go ahead and take a few more hands. Chris, I guess, if you want to go through the list in alphabetical order, and we can pick a few off?
Yeah, just an FYI that one of our previous speakers, who wasn't in, isn't here. So Melanie Camello will have the floor, and we'll go from there. Great.
Can I just interrupt for one second before she starts? I'm looking at my screen, and I've got a Bridget Mercier actually raising her hand. So if you could put her on the list?
Can you give me the name again, Jean, please?
Bridget Mercier.
This is April, and I just have a question. Is our superintendent also being, serving as our timekeeper tonight for the three minutes?
I imagine she'd be okay with that.
Happy to do so. Yep. Thank you.
And I think I would just remind folks that when it's your, when you'd like to speak, to not raise your hand on camera, but please raise it via the platform that we're using. And then when you're done speaking, to please put your hand down, if you can remember. Thank you.
Yeah, and in case anybody is not aware of how to do that, quickly, if you flow over the middle screen where you can see the video, there should be a button just right of center that says "Participant List." It will pop open a list of everybody in the meeting. Your own name, I believe, will be first on the list. If you look to the right of your name, you should see a little symbol that looks like a hand. And if you click that, then Chris, as our host, will be able to see that your hand is raised.
Andy, this is April. I'm using this meeting web-based, and that option is not available on the web-based, WebEx. Follow the steps that you said, and I do not have a little hand. So we need to keep that in mind, that everyone may not have that same accessibility.
Okay. Thank you. Melanie, if you're there, you've got the floor.
There we go. I just want to say thank you to the school board and everybody for all your work. I know that, not the meeting of the power, but the meeting before that, we were looking for, I heard the Board ask for a district plan. One district plan that had two options, an in-person option and a Pembroke School District-provided remote option. The way the new plans that have come out, I just wanted to mention that it does say at some of the schools, some of the three schools, that V-Lax is the only remote option. I encourage you guys to have a conversation about that. I attended the V-Lax online elementary school open house today for grades four and five. There is a waitlist on all core classes for math, social studies, and language arts. They are trying to hire more teachers. There's no timeframe right now, but the only thing for a fourth and fifth grader that they could sign up for is art and PE. And it is a part-time education. They are going to try and have a vote in January of 2021 to see if they can get enough teachers to do a full-time elementary school program going. At that time, if they do pass that, the option would be to disenroll from your local school district if you wanted full-time education through V-Lax. So that could be, in the near future, a problem with our budgets. And I just wanted to pass along that information to look seriously at what V-Lax has for options as being the only remote option, because I saw great things today, and I saw some huge barriers. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Melanie. Do the, Chris, are the Girardis happen to be on? I'm trying to look.
No, I've looked at all options to see if they're here, unless their name is different, they're not here. Okay, so next we would have, Mike would be on the floor.
Yes, I'm Mike Wiggit. I'm some school board chair. I would just like to have you reconsider the whole remote vote and look into the hybrid that the other districts, I believe we've all done, with the options of giving parents the V-Lax or whatever else is available. So thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next, I have R. Sharilla on the floor.
Sorry, there, I had to unmute. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, my name is Ryan Sharilla. Dear Pat Lane, Pembroke, my son would be a soon-to-be kindergartner. And I just feel like, I have a lot of thoughts here, so I'll try to be quick. I would really encourage everyone, the superintendent and the Board, to really, to really consider the developmental needs of children as we're looking at this. Hybrid and remote is awful, in my opinion, for kindergarten. I mean, what is that? What's going to happen, really? Also, hybrid, I think, is the worst opinion, worst option, because it presents so many logistical challenges for working parents. My wife is a teacher at the Hill School. I mean, what's she, you know, and I work full-time in a school as well. You know, finding childcare for that is just going to be, is going to be rotten. Anyway, so I think that's the worst option. I think it needs to be either 100% remote or 100% in-person. Now, that being said, I would like to mention that it feels like we're behind the eight ball here. I think the planning on this has been delayed. It's been too late. Other school districts are on top of things and have had plans mapped out well in advance. And it feels like we're only about, what, three weeks or less away from the opening? And I feel like, no matter what decision is made, we need to have some delay in the beginning of the school year to allow teachers time to prep and plan and rehearse. If we are going to have kids in-person in the school, you know, it feels like there's so many details, and I want to know those details very clearly. And the teachers need to know those details. For example, if we're going to get sanitized regularly every day, I hope, more frequently would be better. Is there proper ventilation? Is my son's classroom going to have proper ventilation, air intake and exhale, you know, ventilation? Will the teachers be provided PPE from the school? If we're going to be expecting teachers to be putting themselves in harm's way, are we going to be providing this? I know a lot of people have been saying we should, the taxpayers should get tax cuts. Well, no, maybe not, because there's going to be a lot of added costs involved with going back to school in the midst of a pandemic. I know New Hampshire has low numbers, but, you know, let's keep it that way. You know what I mean? Like, let's keep it that way. You know, yeah, I think that's it. But specifically, I want to know, do the classes have proper ventilation? And will my child have enough? Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Next, I have Chris here on the floor.
Hi, can you guys hear me? All right. So my name is Bridget Mercier. I'm in the room with Julia Denoncourt, Kaylee Bolio, Cara Valley, and Tucker Reiner. We are all upcoming seniors at Pembroke Academy. So I really want to thank you for your time and letting me talk. We need to act like this is going to continue for the entire year. I understand that splitting the school days by the alphabet would be beneficial to families, but realistically, parents driving students to school would have to do it five days a week during a regular school year anyways. On top of that, for parents, for a grade school child, they will have to be responsible for figuring out a plan for their three days of remote learning for their, for who's going to be watching their child. But if we were able to have everyone going to school, and there were only two days off, then they would only have to worry about two days of finding care for those child for remote learning. We will wear masks. We will social distance. We will do whatever means are necessary in order to be able to have a full in-school experience with our class without exposing the entire senior class to one another and splitting us by the alphabet. Chances of us being able to have a prom and a senior trip entirely diminishes. And I know that's what none of us want. We, I speak for the majority of the senior class in saying that if you split us by the alphabet, we will be going remote, because it's not what we want, and it's not worth it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, I have Deanna on the floor.
Hi. You guys all set, hearing me?
Yep.
Awesome. I just want to let you guys know that I am encouraging you to vote for 100% in-school option with, you know, families to have the option to go remote, because I do understand that there are children that may have, you know, health concerns where they have to stay home. But families and children need to get their kids in school. My kids have fortunately had some socialization throughout this, but it's still affecting them, and we see it affect multiple other children. They need to be able to go to school. We also, on the financial end, I just got back from furlough, started working this week. I can't go back to work and say, hey, in three weeks, I gotta stay home again. So my children, and I'm sure many other children, are going to be left behind during the remote school days in which they're supposed to be synchronously learning, and there's going to be nobody there to actually help them. I have going into first grade, going into second grade, and going into seventh grade. Seventh grader pretty much can do it on her own, but she can't help her brother and sister do it. And if she did, she's gonna lose out on her education as well. Children get migraines from being on the computers all day. There's multiple things at play here. There's many children that should be able to go to school 100% and let there be an option for the other parents to keep their kids home that need to. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, we're at about eight minutes. So do you have a rough number of how many hands are up right now?
Yeah, I have four, maybe three, because one took their hand down.
Okay, so let's, if you could write those down, I think we'll stick with those. That'll get us well past the 10 minutes anyway.
All right, I have those written down. So keep going?
Yep.
All right, Stephen M., your hand was up. I see that it's down, but you have the floor if you so choose.
Hi, guys. Stephen McIsen here. I have three children in the school district. I just want you guys to take the time to think about this. Give us the option to have a choice. And I don't think that's an overcomplicated thing to do. You guys are very smart, resilient, resourceful people, and I think there's enough people in the community where we can make the choice happen. Just give us the choice. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Next on the floor is Chris Bova.
Thank you for your time, folks. I appreciate it. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So we always are a reactive nation, and we're reacting to things that always happen. When shootings happen, that's our biggest precedent. We want to make sure shootings don't happen. We go through inconveniences of trainings, drills, things that we have to add to. Only this year, the shooter's name is COVID-19. This year, teachers are going to likely be subjected to videos and presentations about the importance of hand washing, masks, social distancing. We'll be told to have to set the kids three to six feet apart from each other. The teacher's going to be expected to discipline the kids who aren't wearing masks, standing too close to each other. They're going to ask dismissed kids who are sniffling, sneezing. They're going to be required to sanitize everything in the room several times a day. They'll prohibit students from sharing classroom books and materials or using paper to turn in assignments. It'll be suggested that we wear face shields, goggles, and scrubs. They'll be expected to educate the students in a bubble. It's imperative that we follow these rules and guidelines, or someone could die. The truth is, someone is going to die. We're all just hoping that, praying that doesn't happen to us in our community, but something's going to happen. It's just a matter of time. We'll all mourn the loss of the lives and honor them with an obligatory moments of silence. I just feel that we have to take this all into consideration, that COVID-19 is something that we all want to get back to normal from, but it's too dangerous to assume that all the precautions we're going to do, we're going to take care of this. Ventilation, cleaning, children wearing masks. All this just multiplies the fact that people are interacting with each other and bringing it home to each other, to elderly people, to parents. And therefore, I think we should definitely consider remote the whole way. Thank you for your time. Thank you for all your efforts, Board. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Next, I have James Hamelin on the floor.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, my wife and I are here. Ethan is our grandson. When Ethan was young, when we first started taking him to daycare, I remember dropping him off to a room of snot-nosed kids, and he was exposed to all of that. And now, he doesn't get sick at all, because he got his, we'll call it an immunization when he was young. He was exposed, and he grew, and he's strong for that. So that's it. He's, I mean, he's healthy now. My suggestion and another outside-the-box thought, which has been proven to work since my wife graduated from the Nashville school system, they go all day, upperclassmen start in the morning from 7 until noon, and then underclassmen will come to school from 1 o'clock until 6 o'clock. That way, you have your built-in social distancing, because the classes never mingle. It just extends the school day, and everybody can be in class at the same time with social distancing. Listening to all these, the kids that you have had speak, they want to be together, and they want to be in school, and this would provide an opportunity for that. Thank you for your work, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
All right, we have, the last person on the list is Jenny Manzelli.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yep.
You guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you so much. I have about five-ish points to just highlight real quick. So thank you, school board, for all you do. Number two, it's impossible to please everybody in this situation. We're all doing the best we can here. Number three, please look outside the box. Look at the big picture. I was a high school teacher, and I know how important senior year is. It's like your big year, but senior prom, senior trip, there are much bigger things awaiting you in your life that things like senior prom and senior trip will be a little blip in time. You won't even remember what your dress looked like. So just really look at the big picture here. There are so many bigger things in your life for those incoming seniors. If you do go remote, just please remember that. Safety first. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, I'm sure you've read in the news that kids have already died who have, schools who have resumed school in person have had children who have already died. So like, are we thinking about that? Next, school, the proposed start date is like 19 days away, 19. I personally feel like that's not enough time to give the teachers time to prep properly their PPE. What is the sanitation going to be? What's the ventilation situation that's going on? Next, just, you know, village effort, everybody. Please consider the village effort. Please consider, you know, expand, maybe not expanding, your germ bubble. You know, take in kids, if you can, in order to allow adults to continue working. That woman who just got back from furlough can't take more time off, you know?
Sorry, Jenny, that's too...
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you to everybody that spoke tonight, Tuesday night last week. It's excellent for us to hear everything, and we appreciate the emails. We've gotten a ton of them. We've read them all. So thank you for everybody that has chimed in on this. It's important to know what the community is thinking. We will move on to Agenda Item 2B, school reopening, and I am going to turn it over to Patty for a brief inter- And I am going to turn it over to Patty for a brief introduction, then we'll hear from the building principals.
Can I ask you a question first?
Sorry, somebody's got a lot of feet.
This is Ann. On the agenda, could we move the um, public comments to after the board discussion? Because the residents might have a discussion about what we talk about.
Could you repeat that, Ann?
We switch number three and four on the agenda. We have public comments prior to the board discussion. And I'm thinking the residents want to have a discussion about what we talk about.
Yes, that was my intention. Um, I guess I didn't communicate that clearly to Kathy. Our second public comment section is usually just before uh, non-public session. So that's where we will do it. As a reminder, and we talked about this on Tuesday, um, we will have a need for non-public session. Under both A, which is dismissal, promotion, compensation or disciplining of an employee. And under B, the hiring of any persons as a pub- public employee. So. That will be towards the end of the agenda, but we will switch number three and number four. So the public comment section is the last thing before non-public. All right, Patty.
Thank you. I know we have a lot of information to present to you, so I'll try to keep this brief. Basically just to introduce you to the three school plans and the possible learning models that we've proposed. Um, and just as a recap to remind you, the work that's been going on. We had our first large SAU leadership team meeting all together on July eighth and ninth. And that was from all central office administrators, principals, assistant principals, special ed administrators. Um, we had a two-day retreat. We talked about all three models. We broke off into small groups and devoted a considerable amount of time. Uh, talking about those as well as what went well and what we needed to work on for remote learning. From that, we formed an SAU-wide task force that included the SAU leadership and the principals. We also included uh, SAU facility director, a school nurse and a food service staff member. They've been all talking this summer, so we had a rep from each of those groups come and work with us. And then we also formed um, school-based task force. So we tried to streamline the process, put everybody in the room together. Come to agreement on outlines, some things that we agreed on and some things that we're all going to include in our plans. From that work, there was a unanimous decision by the administration and the SAU-wide task force to present each of our five school boards. With a framework or an outline that was a recommendation for a hybrid model to return to school. The hybrid model that was proposed put our students into two cohorts. Many of the districts around the state are working on that ABAV model. The schools in our SAU and in Pembroke surveyed all the staff and the results in Pembroke indicated that at Pembroke Academy. Sixty-three percent of the staff were in favor. Uh, Pembroke Hills staff chose that as the number one choice in a ranking survey. Uh, and then fifty-five percent of the staff at Three River School chose the hybrid. And then the other agreement that was unanimous was that all students and adults in the building would wear uh, face masks. So we understand that the planning needs to be fluid. We need to be able to pivot. We, that is why we're talking about the three models. And we know that circumstances are going to change this year and it's very likely that we will move between models. We talked a lot about having data to make decisions. You'll see in the plans that there's um, some thoughts on how to do that. We still need to make some decisions around that. We certainly don't have all the answers. But we've been spending a lot of time doing the work. We need to thank the staff that, um, you know, teachers are not under contract during the summer. But they've spent countless hours working on these plans and assisting us in this work that we, we couldn't have made this happen without them. So I just want to acknowledge that work and thank everyone that helped us with these plans. So each of our uh, administrators is going to present the plan for their specific school. Again, we did try to have some commonalities in a similar format throughout each plan so that if you have students in multiple schools. They'll look similar. Um, so if you're ready, I'm going to ask Dr. Morris to kick us off.
Andy, this is April. We have three different plans that have been provided. I'm just curious, are we asking that the plans we can all read? Hopefully, um, if we, if our administrators will kind of condense the information in a time period for us so we can get through that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what uh, Dr. Morris has planned for us, but I'm sure he's not going to go through it page by page. I think. What I'm hoping is they're going to give us um, kind of an overview and what will, what it will actually look like in, in play. But I guess we will find out right now.
I'm, I'm not going to read the report. Uh, so, good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. Uh, let me first take this opportunity to publicly thank the hard dedication of every. Member of the Pembroke Academy reentry team. This group of individuals represents many different stakeholder groups in the Pembroke Academy community. And it was inspiring to see the level of collaboration and open-minded professional dialogue that this team engaged in over the past month, particularly last week. Uh, this team submitted a comprehensive fifty-eight-page plan that explores the three learning models suggested by the state. Those being remote, hybrid and full in-person learning. We examined the benefits and challenges of each model as well as anticipated the issues we would have to navigate depending on which direction the board decides to go in. If they decide to make a change. In the plan, we share a review of remote learning from the spring and a review of the state's guidance document issued on July fourteenth. We also provide a review of the data collected thus far from Pembroke stakeholders. We then provide an overview of each of the three learning models and examine the benefits and challenges inherent in each of those. We share a decision-making tree for parents based on what the board decides to do and then we recommend a data-driven decision-making matrix. That would assist the board in making determinations between these three models throughout the year. Then we explore the health and safety protocols we would put in place for each model and review each component with greater specificity throughout this section. Considerations examined are cohorts, environmental cleaning and disinfecting, hand hygiene, isolation. Personal protective equipment, screening and social physical distancing. The plan outlines how we would respond to an outbreak in the building and the important role that the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services would play in that process. The members of our reentry team spent a lot of time anticipating issues with how we would run certain in-school protocols and we examine those at length in the plan. Components examined include one-to-one Chromebooks, five oh four students, arrival and dismissal. Field trips and assemblies, school counseling interventions, medically compromised students and staff. Parent conferences and meetings, hallway traffic, social emotional support, meals, special education. Student restrooms, substitute teachers and transportation to Concord Regional Technical Center. We then have a school programming section where we share potential school schedules in each model. As well as propose what the school calendar could look like to best facilitate learning for each method of instructional delivery. The New Hampshire Department of Education through the state guidance document shared on July fourteenth has explained that up to the three days can be used. To provide additional professional development for teachers. Consequently, we are recommending that the dates of Thursday, August twenty-seventh and Friday, August twenty-eighth be changed to professional development days to support teacher training and preparation. We then communicate a list of shared expectations for students, parents, teachers in the school. This was an important recommendation from the state guidance document and one that we also identified as being necessary after our experiences with remote learning in the spring. After our conclusion, there are appendices that have data from our service. Well as hyper documents and resources that we either use in the development of this document and/or will continue to use throughout the school year. I'd like to revisit the data-driven decision-making matrix for a moment. We highly recommend that there be pre-identified and pre-communicated thresholds to determine when we would transition from one mode to another. A data-driven decision-making matrix, uh, like the one cited from Hamilton County Schools is a good example of this. Now, Hamilton County Public Schools is a school district with over a three-hundred-and-eighty-five-million-dollar budget for a county in Tennessee. And Pembroke, being a different context, might choose threshold levels that are different than this example. Important point here is that adopting a system similar to this model would provide a means to inform decision-making. When considered in addition to staffing levels and logistical concerns in each school. Which are two important caveats that the Hamilton Public School System emphasizes. For instance. Our local health data from Merrimack County or Merrimack and Hillsborough Counties combined. Would put us in the low end of the transitional phase, moving us close to going back to school full-time. This is good news for Pembroke Schools and leads me to believe that a remote or hybrid option would be short-term if those local health trends should continue. But that information does need to be compared to staffing and logistical considerations in each school. Just as Hamilton County has emphasized that they would do using this model. I just want to emphasize that the administration in all SAU schools are advocating for a hybrid model to start the year. What is important to consider for reopening is that the CDC and New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services have outlined social distancing and face covering protocols. That significantly reduce the transmission of COVID nineteen and it is imperative that these measures be practiced in Pembroke. Like many industries in the state, reopening was performed in a phased-in approach. Allowing for each organization to assess staffing levels, test systems and protocols and remediate issues as they were identified at a fractional capacity. Arrival and dismissal, transitional times between classes, capacity of the nurses' office, capacity of the cafeteria during lunch. These are all systems that need to be tested safely. This is why the administration is still advocating for a hybrid model to start the year in order to load test these areas of concern in a safe manner. That still allows for in-person learning. After a stopped opening, Pembroke can transition to whatever model the board determines is safe. And using a data-driven, uh, driven decision-making matrix based those decisions on local health data and the logistics within each building. I understand that families want choice and as much as we want to meet everyone's needs, we may not be able to accommodate all choices depending on staffing. It is important to remember that the staff is also in the middle of a global pandemic and the school cannot be all things, all people, especially when those choices. Are at the extremes of a continuum where some want fully in the building uh, with no restrictions at all and others want full remote. To access to teachers as if they were in the same room together and this all with uh, no budgetary impact. We will accommodate as best we can, but staff have health and family considerations to also navigate and staffing levels and certification issues are huge hurdles. That we may or may not be able to address. It is only reasonable to expect that there will have to be compromises for all parties involved, fortunately. One narrative that I have come across through some of the parent emails I have received is that teachers want a full remote option because they don't want to wear masks. We have included staff survey data in our report that shows that eighty percent of staff want to wear masks and another ten percent didn't have an opinion either way. Additionally, there is a narrative that I've been, has been expressed to me in emails that staff don't want to work or are lazy. My own experiences as both a colleague and as a parent and community member in this district do not support that assertion. Nor does the data back that up. When staff were surveyed on July fourteenth, sixty-three percent thought a hybrid model. Uh, was a good way to go and another twenty percent said they wanted to open schools for full return. Uh, and this isn't to suggest that advocating for a full remote model is out of laziness, it's just a different opinion. One of the most important issues that has been illustrated as schools across the country begin opening is the role of families in keeping school communities safe. At-home screening every day before students leave to go to school is our first line of defense in ensuring that the school environment stays safe and COVID nineteen free. As seen in one recent example in the Midwest, one family's cavalier approach to COVID nineteen clouded their decision-making and allowed their child to go to school. With a COVID test still pending. That test would ultimately be positive. That school building closed halfway through their first day of school. Whether we like it or not, we are all interconnected and health crises like this dramatically illustrate that point. As we prepare for a return, we will provide the necessary information to parents to practice at-home screening protocols. And implore all families to take that guidance seriously, to not compromise our goal of. And, and safe and healthy. The Pembroke Academy reentry team understands that the best way for students to learn is in our building. And our goal is to get everyone, uh, every student back to school full-time. Our priority is the safety of all of our community members and this group uh, work to reconcile those two objectives. Uh, these, the models outlined in the plan show the inherent benefits and challenges to all modalities of instructional delivery. Uh, and it is important to note that the plans and ideas outlined in this document represent the committee's best thinking. Based on the information that was available when creating the plan. We will maintain plans and training in order to be flexible and provide as seamless a transition as possible. Should we have to shift between models due to changes in our COVID nineteen regional or local contexts. As the challenges related to the COVID nineteen pandemic continue, our educational professionals are preparing to provide the best possible care. Connection and continuity of learning to our students and families in the Pembroke Academy community. Uh, that's all I have in terms of prepared remarks. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have specific to Pembroke Academy.
Board members, do you have questions for Mr. Morris?
This is Amy. Can I just, I have a question in response to the invitation for questions.
Go ahead.
My questions are more in the nature of, they're not specific to the Pembroke Academy plan, but there's. They're about commonalities for all of the three schools plans. So I assume that we want to hold questions like that as part of sort of our discussion. After we've heard from all of the three schools, but I just wanted to check in.
I think that would make sense. I think if we have um, school-specific questions, we can ask those of, of the principals. If we have district-wide questions, we can wait until the end. Um, it makes sense to me.
Andy, this is Ann. I have a question that only pertains to Pembroke Academy.
Go ahead, Ann.
They were discussing about um, allowing the. Pembroke Academy students to attend the school in Concord for their classes. And it says here that they are promoting that the students take their own vehicles. Have we checked with our liability insurance? To make sure this is feasible? It's on page eleven.
Uh, we have, so we've checked with Concord High School in terms of availability of that. The liability part is something I'll have to follow up on. Uh, it has been our policy in the past that they use our buses. However, you know, we want to also try to limit exposure uh, to students on buses too. So, uh, but that is something we can follow up on.
Other questions for Dr. Morris?
Andy, this is Amy again, specific to this part of the plan. This isn't necessarily a question, but I did want to note that um, on. You know, there's some issues with the page numbering in the report and I understand that this was produced in a huge time crunch, but. The portion of the Pembroke Academy report, which is, has the printed page number is twenty-five to twenty-six. And then the several pages that follow. I really found that list of issues. Great. I just, it really articulated a lot of the concerns that I've had on my mind. And so I just wanted to call out that um, identification of issues. Those first two pages are sort of like a list of them and then the following pages are um, more of an explainer type. More of a detailed consideration of them and I think that that's a list that is important.
Thank you.
Others?
Andy, this is Ann again. I have a question. It might have to do with all the schools on page twenty-five when they're saying responding to outbreaks. There's quite a few different numbers listed. First weeks, ten days, fourteen days. Is that something that we will iron out?
Yeah, I believe the difference in the numbers would be, uh, I'm trying to find exactly where you're, oh, I see it now. Yeah, we will obviously want to make sure that those days are consistent and we'll check on that. My belief was that they are consistent. Document and it was more about um, a difference in days.
Because some say two weeks, some say ten days, some say fourteen, so I just didn't know, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Board members?
Ann again, the question I have, I hope, I think will be the last one for this. Is when they list that um, full remote, hybrid and then V-Lax. Um, I wanted to see if we would consider removing V-Lax in our reports because that is not a Pembroke. School district-based program.
Uh, Dan, you're still muted.
Thank you. Um, I can just talk a little bit about how we've utilized V-Lax in the past and how we would plan on using it to supplement. Student programming here, uh, in the event that, you know, things aren't listed anymore. You know, we would be very flexible uh, in terms of if a student wanted to be remote. Uh, we would try to accommodate them with remote options that we have available based on our staffing availability. Uh, we would try to accommodate them with remote options that we have available based on our staffing availability. And then supplement that with V-Lax classes, uh, if possible. Uh, I think the priority would be to try to get them into our programs with our teachers if available and then to go to V-Lax as a secondary option.
Anne?
You're welcome.
Um, I've got a question and it will probably. I'm going to ask the same question of each administrator, but I would like to know specifically from you, specifically for your building. Um, and I think this was mentioned in, in each of the plans, but I, I just want to ask it flat out. Um, do you believe or does the committee believe? That if we went back a hundred percent in person, that we could realistically expect um, social distancing to be achievable? In, in PA?
Uh, I, I can't speak for the committee as a whole, um, but I can, my personal beliefs are that that would absolutely be impossible for us to practice uh, social distancing. It really comes down to what our risk tolerance is as a district. Uh, and you know, if we pull back, then we are, we have to. Be comfortable with the fact that we would not be able to practice social distancing. Uh, as the DHHS or the CDC would recommend.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Um, one other question I had, uh, do, and maybe this isn't for you. I can't remember. We do have. One or more of the sending towns that, that send one or two buses. Is that correct to PA?
Chi-Chaster.
Okay, so um. I don't know if you have, and, and I think somebody else is going to talk a little bit more about transportation later, but do we have an idea? Um, of if, if that would still. Is that bus doable? And I think, you know, I'll ask this question of the elementary. It's going to be much more important there, but. What we know right now from the bus company, can we make that happen?
Um, I can, I can talk about my experiences with the CRTC bus. Uh, Chi-Chaster. Works on the, uh, the Chi-Chaster bus, but everything that we've heard is that, you know, if we have a capacity of let's say thirteen students. And then we would require additional runs. Uh, not only do we have to make sure that we're flexible in terms of. You know, tardies and all of that on our end. Um, there is an additional cost per bus per run. Uh, so for instance, with CRTC, there's an additional cost. I believe it would be ninety dollars per bus, uh, per run. Uh, if we needed additional runs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last call for questions for Mr. Morris from board members before we move on.
Andy, can I ask a question concerning the busing?
Sure.
Has our bus company told us they will not allow a full bus? Have they give us any?
No, Anne, they haven't. Um, we talked about that today, uh, in a meeting. They have left. To us, so they had talked about, um, you know, whether or not we were going to allow one child per seat, whether we would require a six-foot. It, that makes a difference on how many students they can um. Put on a bus. We're estimating around twenty-seven students. If we stick to the minimum of three feet. Um, there would be a requirement that masks are worn and the drivers would also be required to wear masks.
Thank you, Patty. So the bus company is leaving the district?
Yes, on the capacity issue they are.
More question for Pembroke Academy. Um, I, I assume that we're going to have a discussion later, the board, and they might revote, um, what we have decided. How a school is going to look. Um, I didn't see in any of these reports, how many math teachers are coming back? How many? You know, English teachers are coming back. So how can we make a decision if we don't know how many staff will be out on a medical leave?
Can we go away? Thanks for talking about that right back to me.
Can I just jump in, um, before we answer that and remind, um, everybody to please keep yourself muted unless you're the one speaking. I'm hearing a lot of feedback from. Um, people that are not on the board and it's hard to hear what everybody's saying. Thanks.
So Anne, we did collect a little bit of informal data, um, from our HR director. The difficulty with this is it's not binding and people aren't under any requirement to notify us by a certain date. So we are made aware, there's roughly two to three staff members per building. Right now that we know are not coming back. We don't have the specifics, um, regarding what grade they're teaching because right now. Uh, human resources is the only person with that information. It had, there's, you know, there needs to be paperwork filled out. We need to determine what type of a leave they want. Um, whether their, their leave is um, completely, or whether they can do some remote teaching. So you're right, there's, you know, every school in the state is struggling with, with similar issues of the unknowns and not having answers to all the questions yet, but. We do know far, um, informally that there's at least two or three teachers per building, but beyond that, we don't have any more data than that.
Thank you, Patty.
Andy, this is Amy. Can I follow up on that?
Sure thing.
This was one of my, um, sort of district-wide questions. Um, what's the timeline for having that information?
Our HR director is asking for it now, um, but I don't believe. We can put a time restriction on it, so we can ask staff to be gracious and let us know absolutely as soon as possible, but. Realistically, someone could come a week before school and, and identify an issue that they have, or they could get sick between now and then. Um, we're going to do our very best to work with the people who know now, um, that there's a barrier and get that in the works right away, but I just do want to be honest and upfront. Things could happen between now and then.
I would say, Amy, I just want to chime in quickly and say, I, I personally, I feel like it's a chicken or the egg type of thing too, because some of them are probably waiting for our decision before they make that decision.
Um, Patty, I still don't understand from your response, um. You know, like how? Do you expect, understanding that people can, you know, say. Today, I'm coming back to work and then in two weeks say, no, I'm not. Leaving that aside, how long do you expect it will take for HR to, you know, receive responses, collect the responses? And simmer it down to something more than, you know, informally, three to four people in each school?
She's left the sort of informal survey open at this point because I've asked her to try and get as many responses as she can. Um, but she's already reaching out and having conversations with those that did identify that they may have a barrier. So I would anticipate having more information about that, um, very soon.
Hi Patty. Um, and this is not, this is uh, for a guideline, not a choice. Decision as far as the survey goes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for, um, Dr. Morris before we move on to TRS?
I have a question.
Um, is that, I got, I remember, I'm, I'm sure that there are some people on here that this is their first meeting, but. Um, the public is only allowed to. Comment at, at the designated public comment sections of which there is one more later in the meeting. Um, are there board members that have any more questions for Mr. Morris? Alright, um, then I think Mr. Marston has the floor.
Hey, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sure can.
Great, thanks. Um, I'm going to echo an awful lot of what, uh, Dr. Morris said, so I'm not going to, uh. Spend all the time, uh, going over those same bullet points. Uh, I think he articulated them very well and I think a lot of those, uh, will apply to, uh, Three Rivers School. Uh, I do want to start off however by, uh, thanking the volunteer, uh, teacher committee, uh. That, uh, came in and did some work on this. Uh, also we had a parent group that came in and spent some time with us. Um, specifically there are a few people did a lot of heavy, heavy lifting. Katie Gagnon, our assistant principal. Eliza Morris, a sixth grade staff member and Kelly and Tenorella, um, our technology person. Without them, we could not have. But, uh, this plan together in a relatively short period of time. I do want to focus on a few other things that, uh, are really, uh, pretty specific to Three Rivers, but also maybe to the other schools. Um, really important to note that the number of students, um, that, uh. We deal with is going to drive a lot of our decision. Uh, from schedules, I've got a schedule that is not built yet and we're waiting for this decision, but that's going to drive many of these decisions. If we find out that, uh, fifty percent of our school wants to stay home remote, that's going to look different than if only. Twenty percent want to stay home or five percent want to stay home. Um, so those are all, uh, pretty major, uh, decisions that we have to make in a quick turnaround. Uh, and until we get, uh, information, I find it very difficult, also impossible. To make, uh, some choices as far as scheduling, how many kids could be remote, what kind of staffing would have available. Um, one of the schedules that we're particularly struggling with is our unified art schedule. It's very complex. And, uh, class sizes are typically much larger, so, um, we're really struggling to figure out how to make those happen, particularly band and chorus. Uh, those, those particular subject areas do drive the majority of our unified arts schedule. So we, um, those are some problems that we have to deal with. Should we even offer course and band? The, the first plan that we've talked about, everybody's talked about is in-school learning, a hundred percent in. Um, it would be a traditional school schedule. Um, and I think, uh, Dr. Morris said it and I think Andy, you asked. Um, there's no expectation that social distancing would work. We, there was no way that we could, uh, possibly do it. I've physically got into classrooms. And I have, uh, separated chairs, uh, three feet apart and, uh, six feet apart. Um, and we would be lucky to get twelve in a classroom, uh, including the teacher. Uh, and that would be three feet apart with kids probably up against the wall. Um, and I don't think that's optimal for, uh, for, for kids. Um. And our classes are not twelve. Um, majority of classes are, you know, closer to eighteen. Uh, the double bus run may be, uh, something that we need to look at and as Dan had referred to, and I think Amber will confirm that it's ninety dollars per bus per day. For an extra run. We run eight buses, um, and if we decide. That, uh, social distancing is not an issue for this district, then we can put sixty-six on a bus. Uh, if we do decide that we need to, uh, adhere to those, we can get about thirty on the bus, which is about half. Now, having said that, I started off saying that numbers are important. We still don't know how many people can drive their kids to school at this point or willing to. If we have, uh, a number of people who are willing to drive your, your kids to school. Uh, you think we had traffic problems before, uh, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be quite a struggle. Um, and we'll have to really try to address that. We don't know how many kids are willing to walk to school. So those would be, uh, answers that we need, uh, so we can put together a stronger, uh, plan going forward. Um, also with the in-school learning, we, we really believe masks are important to, um. Um, maintain, um, and the number of questions I think we all have is what happens if a kid refuses? Uh, you know, we're going to need to start looking at those. We're going to have to change, one of my bullet points that I have for myself is we're going to have to look at handbook policies. And to see what type of, uh, policies we're, we're willing to or not willing to force. Uh, with a hybrid model, uh, learning, uh. You know, it's the same as what the high school, uh, is talking about as an A-B schedule. And, uh. There's some really good things about there. There's also some challenging things about it. One of the biggest challenging things that, that I see is, and it's also for in, in school learning with a hundred percent in. Is, is how many staff we're going to have. If we follow CDC requirements, we're going to be looking at, uh, people that come in with a runny nose and we're going to send them home. That includes staff. So potentially if we have, uh, I, and I haven't done the numbers because I don't know, uh, how many teachers it would take for us to shut down because of that. It could be, uh, it could be ten, it could be five. Um, we don't have the amount of subs that are, that are out there, um, to support that, um. At that scale. Um, so we also have to talk about those type of protocols to see if a running nose is something we're going to send somebody home for. So, um, again, it goes to data and, and, um. The numbers of folks that we have, have to work in the school. The hybrid model in, in my building, um, adding the remote piece to it. Um, would work very well if we had a certain percentage of students wanting to do remote. What I would do is I would embed that remote, uh, class in the schedule. So we'd have a separate remote group of kids that would do remote. It'd have to be a fifth grade class, sixth grade class and seventh grade class. That way they would follow their typical schedule. They would have in-learn. Uh, only through a computer, uh, teaching with their, uh, instructor. Uh, I think that would work well. Uh, it would be a long day for everybody however. Uh, and, and I think, uh, we still deal with the problems when we, we have illness in the building of any. I also think that, uh, the same thing would be true with, 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 uh, remote learning. We, uh, discussed, uh, like the other schools of going to, uh, four days of remote. Or one day of somewhat of a flex day. Um, that I want to emphasize would be very different than what we did in the spring. Uh, I have proposed that we would do somewhat of a delayed opening schedule. The schedule will start for students at about nine-twenty-five. It would be about half hour classes and it would be in-person. It'd be direct instruction from the teacher. We would take attendance. We, uh, you would see some, I think on the plan, all the plans you set, student expectations and some of that would be, you need to get out of bed. You need, you need to put a shirt on and you need to sit there and we're going to take attendance and we're going to hold you accountable. Um, the other expectation in remote learning would be that teachers are the teachers and hopefully. Parents would be able to come home that night or during the day if they have to stay home, which is obviously an issue. Um, and it would be able to be, uh, hopefully be able to do the typical, uh, question and answer that a parent would do is. How was your day? What homework do you have? And do you need any help with that? Instead of what we did in, in the spring where it was. Uh, I've got a, I feel like I've got to teach it, so we're trying to prevent that. Uh, again, the remote learning piece, um, would be, it would be a long day. I'm not, who's, who's pulling who? Um, our teachers would be in, uh, would have the option of being in the building and I think it's really important for staff. Uh, to, uh, in remote learning, uh, model, uh, to have some flexibility with that because they have daycare issues also. Uh, but we would, uh, I would love to see staff be able to be in the building, so we, if we had to, we could bring, uh, small groups in. Uh, we could, um. Uh, spend the day at school, so teachers frankly would have a beginning and end of the school day. I can't emphasize enough how much, uh, we did not have that in the spring. And I think that's a really important piece, uh, that everybody, uh, has a beginning and end of the day, staff and for students and for families. Um. I also think it's really important, we talk about timelines for the, all these models, because I think, uh, Dr. Morris had, uh, explained. Uh, you know, that this, this could be a moving, uh, these models could be moving. Um, and I think we have to have a real discussion on that. Give you an example would be if a student decided to stay home remote. Let's say they chose V-Lax and they were on it for two weeks and they decided they didn't like it. Um, so is there a timeline? Can they pick and choose? Can they say, I want to come back for hybrid for this week? Oh, I don't like it. Now I want to go to remote. Uh, oh, I don't like that. Now I want to go to V-Lax. So I think we have to build something in there because that's certainly not good for students and it's also certainly not good for, uh. How we structure things because, you know, we have enough students that would completely, uh, sway how we're doing our models. Um. Uh, we talked a little bit about transportation, um, and I think that's something that, uh, as a board, we'll have to really talk about substitutes. Um. Just to be quite honest, we, uh, we budget for about an average of two subs a day in a typical year. Um, I believe that, that equals about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, uh, give or take. I could see that. Budget line being destroyed. Um, and because of all the situations that we're dealing with, so I, I think we need to take that into consideration. And on top of it, uh, we don't have subs. We, you know, we're, we're lucky, uh, last year and the year before, the year before that. Uh, if we have more than three, uh, staff members out in the building, we're not filling those probably for that day. So that means we have to fill with internally, um, and that, that creates a problem because we're pulling from every different direction. Um, the other piece is teacher certification. I want to be, uh, relatively clear on this, that I know there's, uh, some models that. Our teachers can, uh, choose to stay home and, and teach remote and we could, uh, collectively put a, a bunch of students with, or a group of kids with that. Uh, at the middle school, uh, certainly at the high school, certification plays a role in that model. Uh, we have, um, for instance, uh, I'm going to pick on science. We have, uh, all my science teachers are certified in science. Not reading, not math, not social studies. So if I have a science teacher and I only have one science teacher per grade level or per team, if that science teacher stays home to go remote, they can teach science. And probably to just a seventh and eighth grader if it's an eighth grade teacher. Uh, if it's a hybrid, that teacher decides to stay home and teach remote. Now I don't have a science to teach with the kids that are in the building. So it really becomes a, a stretch, uh, to do, uh, having a couple of teachers stay home and doing that remote piece. So it really becomes a stretch to do, having a couple of teachers stay home and doing that remote piece. The other, one other piece that I want to make sure everyone is aware of, I have spoken to the Boys and Girls Club and they're very willing to work with us. And there's, depending on our model, there is about 40 to 50 openings that they would be able to manage. And also keep in mind that's our elementary school, our middle school and also Allenstown. However, that is another option out there for families to look into. I want to emphasize also what Dr. Morris had said, that the plans need to be flexible. And I also want to remind everybody, we still don't know what we don't know. And that's why, one of the reasons I was more convinced with a hybrid. It gives us a chance to figure out those items that are going to work and those that will not. We may have some that we say, man, this is, this is, we're doing it well and we can continue this or we can add to it. There are also maybe some things that we say, this is not working at all. We have to figure out something different. And with a hybrid, we have the opportunity to, to test that. The other, the other one piece before I finish up is in Three Rivers, we will plan on actually using the fifth grade model where all kids will be placed in a homeroom and they'll stay together as a cohort group throughout the day. And in previous years, kids would, each class would exchange classes and they would kinda go all over the place. We would keep them all in one room, homeroom. And they, in our building, particularly when on our grade level, they would be able to walk in between classes, in between the classrooms physically and would not have to necessarily go up the hallway. Which does, I like, there is one other thing. We have a locker issue. So if we issue lockers, we have to figure out a plan to issue those lockers. And I said, if we issue them. So what I would recommend somehow is doing, each cohort group would have lockers separated by at least six to 10 feet. And that's going to be a challenge. Kids would have to go out into, get their lockers only as a cohort group, not as what we currently do, which is the whole grade level. So I think that's all. I think Katie's on. So Katie, if I've missed anything, could you please chime in? But thank you for your time and I'll take any questions. Unless Katie, I forgot something.
I don't, I don't hear Ms. Gagny speaking up. So board members, do we have questions for Mr. Marston?
This is Ann. I have a question. And it's concerning if we do remote learning. On page 18, it says it outlines what remote learning will look like. And then on page 19, it says co-curriculars and athletics will not be able to proceed. Are we currently having sports participating now? Because technically we said we are remote learning.
Thank, actually that's a great point, Ann, and thank you for bringing that up. One of our, one of our issues is going to be, well, a number of issues. One of which is social distancing. The second is transportation. If we're fully remote, I don't know how the kids are gonna get there unless parents can drive them. And second, we don't know if the league that we're currently in is even up or running. So we, we have a lot of things that we're concerned about. We also have a busing issue. If we decide that we're going to use 30 on a bus, we typically have a really robust cross-country team, for example, might have 50 or 60 kids. We can't take one bus and he would have to take two if we decide social distancing is important. So if it's a hybrid, we have the same type of situation where we would have half the kids on one day, the other half on the other. It's pretty tough to do any type of sport. I would say if we do a hybrid, I would love to, if we cannot do athletics, I would love to see, we just scratched the servers talking about this, try to offer some kind of clubs that would simulate some of those events. And we could do running clubs, we could do, you know, some type of fitness clubs, those type of things. Council possibly. That are critical, absolutely critical for kids. Some of those activities we could do remotely also. But, but as far as in-person will be, be very difficult. And we are still waiting for some advice as far as the athletic teams are concerned.
Thank you. So are teams practicing now?
No, and that's not, that's typical. We, we, our, our challenge is, you know, our kids are young enough, they don't drive. At least most of them don't. So we don't want, you know, we have, we've always started once we got school going. So that is, that is not anything different.
Okay, because it's the parents that are asking these questions. So if their child, if we do hybrid and their child is not able to get to every single practice, how are we going to make this fair and equitable to, to even continue sports if not everyone can participate?
Correct. I don't think we can. That's why I said we would, we'd have to look at some alternatives if, if we could.
Thank you.
Yep.
Andy, this is Amy. I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Just following up on the extracurriculars. On pages 11 and 15, you know, they're discussed and it's not entirely certain yet. And that's consistent with our discussion tonight, that there's, you know, things that need to be ironed out. What is the timeline for nailing that down?
Well, honestly, you know, just to be really honest, when, last time the board voted and we were remote, I pivoted and I started to say, how are we gonna do those things? And then once this whole process started, I, I put everything on pause. So we, you know, as soon as, if we have a new decision or the same decision tonight, we will, we will start putting that into play and we'll, we'll, you know, see what, see what our options are. If we, you know, if we decided to go all in, everybody comes back, completely different scenario. If it's fully remote, completely different scenario. So I think, I think we, we're relying a little bit on, well, a little bit, a lot of it, on the decision that we make tonight. And we will make that decision as soon as we can. I think my first obligation, quite honestly, is to figure out how to educate kids. And that would be putting together a schedule. And that, that we typically have done by August 1st and we can publish it. We have a lot of work to do depending on the model that we choose. So I would, that would be my focus for next week with conversations with Katie, who's our athletic director and coordinator of co-curriculars, to find the best way to offer some choices.
I had a different question too. On page seven, it talks about the possible mixing of cohorts for United Arts.
Yes.
Just, you know, again, like, I'll speak for myself, but I think this is true for all of the other school board members. You know, I'm, I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm not a health professional, I'm not an educator. But based on what I do know, won't that mixing completely defeat the purpose of having cohorts?
Yeah, that's something that we're really struggling with. And I think if, at the beginning, I said the Unified Arts schedule is, is the challenge. It's really complicated. And, you know, with this current staff we have, we have only so many options. So we, we have some decisions to make. Just to give you an idea, we basically, when students go to their Unified Arts, we divide them out by four, but when they're on, on team, we divide by five. So those classes are already high. So we have a challenge to come up with a schedule that we can do as many cohorts as we can. Then the other piece is, and that's why I brought up band and, and chorus. Those particular classes, depending on the grade level, are either kinda small or kinda big. And they, it really throws a monkey wrench into the schedule. And it's a monkey wrench I live with and actually put into place myself. I think so strongly about those programs.
Yeah.
If we went to a music theory class instead of band or chorus, that would help us with that. We still have a staffing problem when we divide kids out. So we have, we have quite an entangled schedule that we have to work through. And once we get our model, we'll be able to really begin to dissect that further. I'm in the fact I will, I'm having a staff meeting tomorrow and I will be asking Unified Arts to stay with me to see if they can come up with some ideas also.
Great, thank you. I have one final question for the TRS plan. And I, I have a similar question. I think I might want to discuss this a little bit more later. But the TRS plan on page eight says, I'm just looking for my notes. So I'm not quoting directly from the plan, but it says something about staff who have tested positive will be out for 10 days since the symptoms began and 72 hours after the symptoms stopped. And again, with all the caveats, but I'm not a healthcare provider. What is, you know, where does that guidance come from? A lot of the other places in the report, it says, you know, like per CDC guidance or per state of New Hampshire guidance.
Yeah, it's, it's the same. It, it, beginning of the document, Dr. Chan has put out a school kind of a checkoff list. And I've, I've been told that the good news is I don't make the decision how long they stay out. The tough news is that our nurse, somebody will go to the nurse, whether it be a student or staff member, and the nurse will then report that to the state level and they will ask a number of questions and they will give us guidance. They'll be, who is the student or staff member around? My understanding is that anybody that close contact is without a mask within six feet for 10 minutes or more. So that would be a decision that the state would, would help us. Now, having said that, I can't imagine what kind of phone line they're gonna have. And, you know, all these things coming in. But I, I think it's important that we're going to rely on that type of support because not unlike you, I am certainly not a doctor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andy, this is Ann. I have a question for Three Rivers.
Go ahead.
Parents want to know about meals. So will the food be brought to the classrooms or will students go get the meals in the cafeteria?
Yeah, we're still working on that. I, I think we, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta, we got a number of issues with it. But right now I would envision them going down, grabbing a bagged lunch that's prepared. Not them, we would try to deliver them to the grade level teams that stay in their cohorts in their so-called homeroom and have lunch. Katie and I did spend some time looking at our cafeteria. If we follow our guidelines, we, you know, it's, it's a little confusing, quite honestly, because some people say that you shouldn't have more than 10 in a row. So that, if you follow that guideline, we're gonna have 10 in our cafeteria, maybe. We could probably get 24 to 30 in our cafeteria. And, you know, everybody would be sitting at their own table. They'd be facing forward and eating. But that doesn't, that, that would be different in a hybrid model than it would be a full in. So we would, once again, we would rely on the decision of the board tonight. And most likely, kids would sign up for lunch ahead of time. We'll have a Google Doc or some sort. There'd be a bagged lunch waiting for them or out in the hallway because we have to find a staff member. Again, we have to figure out who the staff is gonna be doing that because everybody's teaching and everybody's working with kids. It might be me delivering lunches to the grade levels. We also don't know how many kids are gonna prefer to bring their own lunch. So those are all things that, as, as we've talked about before, the, the plan needs to be flexible because, you know, we could see a quite a drop in the, in the lunch orders. But we're not sure.
So when they're bagged lunches? Sorry. So when they're bagged lunches, they'll probably be cold lunches?
Correct. That's my understanding.
And the second question they were asking is, everything here says they have to pay online, pay online. And some parents feel more comfortable mailing a check. So it says here that's not allowed and I want to find out why because we can pay with money every place else?
Yeah. That is coming from our Food Service Director. Amber is on. I'm not sure if she can give us some insight on that or not.
Yeah, actually Amber's planning on giving us an update on her conversations with both transportation and food services a little bit later. So Ann, if you don't mind holding that, she might be able to answer that a little bit better.
Excellent. The last question I have is on page 12. It says all field trips in assembly will be canceled until at least January 21st. So will that be January 1st? So do you think we will be changing that to until further notice?
Do that, yes. I, I actually, I looked at that and struggled with that wording, but decided to leave it in because I'm optimistic.
Yeah. We all are, huh?
Trying to be. You know, for us, that's, that's, I'm sorry, but that, for us, that, that affects, you know, two really, really nice trips. And, you know, those trips are really important to our kiddos. Band and music, you know, and I'm really struggling with those, to be honest with you. Really struggling.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Mr. Marston?
This is April and I really want to thank Mr. Marston. Mr. Marston, I want to thank you for your integrity and for your transparency tonight and for sharing with us what you know and also being honest about what you don't know and being very clear about what can be controlled and what is outside of the school district's control. So I know you've gotten a lot of questions tonight and I just want you to know how much I really appreciate that and I'm sure other parents do as well.
Great, thank you.
I, I think you answered most of mine already, Jen, but I will ask you again just for, so that I can be very clear. I think I heard you say that with a full in-person learning, similar to the high school, there would not be a reasonable expectation of social distancing. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think, you know, there's a viral video going around that everybody's seen. I can't remember what state it is of a, of a school that went into session and they're in the hallway.
That was Georgia.
That was Georgia? Yeah, that's what it looks like.
And then I, I know you touched on this too, but I'll ask it again a little more directly, I guess. It, it sounds to me like the expectation for busing, again with the caveat that we don't really have a good look at our numbers right now, but the expectation is that to accomplish busing would incur a sizable additional cost. Is that fair to say?
We know Amber's gonna talk on it, but my understanding is $90 per day for extra bus. Everybody can do the math. That's $700 and something dollars a day. And if it's all eight buses, we're getting, we're getting into the $130,000 range per year.
And is it your, I know I heard Mr. Morris say this, I think I heard you say it as well, but just as the principle of Three Rivers, is your recommendation still that we would start the year in a hybrid model?
Yes. You know, the, the one thing that I have found, the board gave us quite a challenge, to be honest, to put together this plan in two days or two and a half days or whatever. It felt like about five weeks, to be honest with you. But the one thing that it did do for us, did for me, was it began, like anytime you do any type of research and define things, it begins to make the picture clearer. And you begin to understand more detail. The more detail I began to see, it began to make me continually focus, come back to hybrid. Every, every time I kept going, I said, well, yeah, we can do that in hybrid. I can't do that there and I can't do it on the other end. So that kept, kept me coming back. And I'm really trying to stay as open as I can to all models and I keep coming back to that for options for folks. And I'll, I think I'll be very blunt. It is not the easiest one for schools to pull off. It is the most difficult one to do.
All right, last call. Questions for Mr. Marston?
Andy, I have a question. This is Ann. I'm concerned about what Mr. Marston was saying. He was only, they were only given two days to come up with these plans. Was, did higher up administrations say, you know, come April or May, hey, look what we need to do, maybe come this fall, if this is still going to be an issue?
Well, I want to, can I clarify that, Ann, please?
Yeah.
We've been working all along. And we presented a plan last, that was a guideline that we had spent quite a lot of time on. The change was the detail. And so we, we were asked by the board to come up with three plans, plans that required more detail. That's what I was referring to. We've been working with this for a long time. And we presented the board with our plan last time that was the hybrid.
Okay. I just was, I was just concerned that we were rushing you to hurry up and get this information. I was concerned that, you know, this, I did see in all of these reports how many days the groups have met. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any last questions before we move on? All right. Thanks a lot, Mr. Marston. Uh, we will move on to the Hill School. Is Wendy with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
All right. Um, I want to thank you guys for giving me the time to share the Hill School proposal with all of you. I recognize by this point, there's been a lot of information presented, but I would like to take a few minutes to share with you and focus on the unique perspective of, um, Hill School. So as we move our way down into the lower grades, the environment changes. Instructional models differ. Classroom setups are more dynamic. Interaction among students is more physical and social emotional needs present themselves at a more basic level. As an elementary teacher, these are accepted parts of our normal day, of the normal day to day. They make accommodations, provide support and they teach their hearts out. In this new normal that we're facing, we have come to terms with the fact that much of what we hold dear will need to be adjusted for the safety and wellbeing of all involved. My goal is to share our proposal with you in such a way that you can see what our year will look like during this time. As I previously stated, at the heart of this proposal is the safety and wellbeing of our students and staff, while recognizing that their health and safety are directly correlated to the need for them to be in school. So how do we reconcile these two? We have outlined three possible models for reentry into school, full in, remote learning and hybrid. I think it's important that I create a common understanding of how each of these is defined in order for us to understand what they will look like in practice. Um, the full in model requires all students to attend school daily in the building while following a traditional school schedule. Remote learning provides all students access to their education via a remote platform by offering a mix for, of synchronous and asynchronous experiences, as well as the possibility of students receiving services in the building. The hybrid model is the option in which students could attend school in person two days a week and work from home remotely three days a week. In my conversations with staff addressing parent concerns and the hours of brainstorming and planning, planning a common thread appeared. Many of us do not share the same image of what this will look like in the fall. The CDC, DHHS and, uh, New Hampshire DOE have provided guidance documents in which our proposal has drawn all necessary health and safety protocols from. Based on this, we created a set of guiding principles and best practices that informed our specific planning process. First, the importance of creating and maintaining cohorts. At Hill, we've defined these as a group of students in one classroom. The rationale for any that have contact tracing is needed, only a small group of students and staff will be affected. Secondly, adhering to social distancing of three to six feet with our preferred distance of six feet. Thirdly, we would like to require masks to be worn through the day by all students, teachers and staff. This is increasingly important in the elementary setting due to the nature of how elementary classrooms function. Each aspect of the proposal takes into account the recommendation from health officials that no one layer alone is effective. It's the layering effect that provides a safe environment. So if we start by looking at the full in model, we can begin to picture how our layers will be applied. As students arrive at school, they will be temperature screened by staff prior to entering the building. Our sidewalks will have colored dots painted so the students can safely wait their turn. All staff will be required to wear masks and maintain three to six feet social distance if possible. We recognize that many students, especially our littles, will, they'll need assistance that will require us to be in closer proximity. In this case, our layers include a short duration of interaction, being outside in the required masks. Throughout our hallways, arrows on the floor will create safe traffic patterns. Staff will be positioned to guide the students to their classrooms and welcome them into the building. With a full in model, the time it takes for students to be screened and settled into their classrooms will be substantially greater and will stretch into instructional time. Once the students are in their classrooms, breakfast will be delivered in order to avoid congregating in the food service line to minimize interaction with high touch areas, as well as limit the chance for students to come in close contact with others outside of their cohort. In the full in model, desks in the classroom will be placed to the maximum available space between students. It is important to note that we will not meet the three to six feet social distancing guidelines in this model. Our class sizes average 18 to 19 students, which would require a much larger classroom in order to accommodate these guidelines. In a typical elementary classroom, instruction may take place with students gathered around a rug. They'll be, you know, huddled around a small group table or in various spaces, uh, within the classroom. This will be minimized to ensure that if we need to contact trace, as few students as possible are exposed and avoid having to quarantine possibly an entire classroom, as well as limiting the actual potential for exposure within a room. As we move through the day, we've adjusted our schedules and practices to accommodate our safety layers. Bathrooms will be monitored. UA teachers will go to the homeroom class for instruction and lunch will be delivered similarly to breakfast. Recession will take place twice a day and students will play in their cohorts in designated areas. Masks will not be required at recess because we are outside, but all students and staff will continue to maintain social distancing as best as possible. Keep, uh, to their cohorts and practice good hand hygiene before and after recess. Our goal will always be to ensure that we have multiple safety layers in place at all times. Some of the challenges we have identified with a full in model are significant. As I previously stated, we cannot maintain social distancing. The space at Hill is extremely limited and some areas that we typically use for student services will not be utilized due to ventilation concerns. Um, perhaps the largest challenge, and Mr. Morrison talked about this, uh, is, uh, Mr. Marston. Uh, the largest challenge is transportation. Based on bus capacity and social distancing guidelines, it would require at least two runs, if not three, depending on the number of parents that choose to transport their children. Each run, in our case, is a one hour turnaround time and a significant added cost to the district. We cannot extend the school day to accommodate the late arrivals due to the teacher contractual obligations. We would need to dismiss students earlier. Another challenge is the ability to provide a remote learning option with the Hill staff. If teachers are fully committed in the classroom each day, we would need at least 25% of each grade level to choose a remote option to free up a teacher. If we switch gears and think about remote learning, the health and safety concerns are, they're quite a bit different. With board permission, if select students are allowed to access the building for special services, we would implement all of the protocols I've outlined in the previous model. A few differences would be, would, uh, include the ability to socially distance the students. Transportation would not, uh, require additional runs and there is a much lower risk of possible exposure due to the decreased density in the building. The main shift would be in regards to instruction. Since staff would not be focusing on developing health and safety routines with 18 to 19 students, they would devote their time to providing a more interactive remote learning experience. In this model, we would designate two days a week for students to participate in live synchronous lessons and follow up with asynchronous activities that supplement the instruction from the previous day. Daily access to their teacher during designated office hours, as well as access to a technology help desk to troubleshoot, um, common problems. The rationale for this decision is based on the need for small group remote instruction. It is extremely difficult for elementary students to maintain focus in this particular setting. Uh, but working in a small group allows for more teacher-student interaction and engagement. The schedule for the synchronous day would vary depending on the development, developmental level of the students. Intermediate students may be asked to log in for longer stretches of time, whereas primary students would be in shorter bursts. However, the time commitment would equal around, out to around three hours regardless of the grade level. A common teaching practice at the beginning of each school year is these, this idea of building stamina. Students need to work up to longer stretches of time and focus and we cannot, we accomplish this by starting small and growing up it each day. So in the beginning of the year, we would anticipate the need to build their stamina. On an asynchronous day, students would work more at their own pace. Activities for these days could include working through computer programs that provide direct instruction and are correlated to our competencies. Uh, activities that teachers build on seesaw, preparing for the next synchronous day using a flipped classroom methodology. Um, traditionally in the classroom, students are given time to practice the skills they learn and this would replicate that experience as closely as possible. Um, I would like to note that we will be providing all K1 students with a touchscreen Chromebook and grades two to four with a standard Chromebook. A few of the challenges that we've identified with remote learning are more burdensome for families. Students would be at home and for many, this is an economic and social emotional concern. Many students would need support at home to get them set up and, and started on their learning path, especially in the younger grades. We also, uh, know that there is no substitute for being in front of a teacher. Uh, lastly, I'd like for us to look at the hybrid proposal. All of our health and safety protocols for the full in learning would be in place with the very important addition of social distancing. When students arrive, they would be entering into a building that's at 50% student capacity. Screening time would be drastically reduced and social distancing could be adhered to. Classrooms setups would accommodate students spaced six feet apart and allow for more flexibility of movement. We would continue to eat meals in the classroom. UAs would continue to push in and recess would take place in our designated areas. Instruction in a hybrid model would be a combination of live in-person teaching, asynchronous activities at home. Monday would continue to be our flex day in which students would have access to teachers during office hours and special services may be provided on an appointment basis on that Monday. Similar to remote learning, a technology help desk would be available each day for students who need troubleshooting assistance. Um, in this model, transportation is less of a challenge with students socially distanced and the building at 50% capacity, we're more able to transport students to school, um, with the higher likelihood of one bus run. The hybrid model poses additional challenges to families as well, um, as schools. Child care is recognized as a major need and barrier for many families, similar to the remote model. In school, the health and safety protocols, they put an added strain on our staffing needs, our training capabilities and our facilities management. Uh, moreover, we recognize that many parents would choose to have their children educated through a remote model. Based on the numbers of students that would be attending in person, we may not have the staffing available to provide a remote option taught by Hill School teachers. Each model is not without its challenges. There are barriers that we face in transportation, staffing, facilities, resources, training. Taking all of this into consideration, um, the Pembroke administrators, we are recommending that we adopt a hybrid model as a transitional phase. And the reason for this is twofold. One, we want our students back in the building. That's unequivocally something I've heard from teachers and staff members I've spoken to. We know that being in front of us is the best opportunity for their education and growth. But we also understand that there is a health and safety factor that we have never dealt with before. And in order to provide the safest possible school environment, we need time. We need the ability to work through these procedures and protocols, which are entirely new to the education of our children. The first four to six weeks of any school year are always dedicated to routines, procedures and community building. This year is no different in that aspect. However, we now have a different set of routines, a different set of procedures and a different form of community building. But we also understand that if we overload the system too quickly, we are more likely to fail. Our ultimate goal is that our students are back in front of us and we can provide them with a quality education. The added challenge is to make sure that we are doing this in the safest possible environment during a time that none of us have experienced before. My hope today is that I've been able to provide you with a snapshot of what returning to school might look like in each of these three models. I am absolutely proud of what we'll have done to ensure our return to school is safe, uh, and seamless and memorable.
Thank you. Um, questions about Hill School?
This is April. I have a question. Um, so what accommodations are available for our children that are medically at risk? And how can we ensure that all of our children have access to an education?
I'm really glad you asked that and I was hoping somebody would ask that question. Um, we've spent a lot of time talking about special education and um, what that would look like in these models. Um, one of the things that will be happening at the beginning of the year for all students with IEPs is they will be, um, uh, letters going out soon that they will have access to, um, a meeting. And that team will discuss what that plan for that individual child will look like. Um, because it's an individual basis for each of these, these kiddos, we will take a look at all of the resources and everything that we have available to really define, uh, for them, what their options would be. If it's remote or in person, um, we would look at bringing them into the building for services, um, of course with board permission. So we will put those individual plans into place and those meetings will have to take place within the first 30 days of school.
Follow-up question, please. Um, my follow-up question is that not all children who have a medical condition have an IEP. For example, I've spoken to a parent who has a child who has asthma and sometimes those symptoms looks like a symptom of COVID and her child's already been, um, required to receive multiple COVID tests. And then while we're waiting on that to come back, we still have to ensure that we have a way to educate our children. Um, so that's important to me. We can't, if someone has an underlying condition, we can't just kick them out of school and not provide them an education. We need to kind of make that fluid and I'm curious. I want more information about how that would work.
That's absolutely been one of those, uh, discussions that we've had. Um, there, I think it's kind of twofold. So there, when you dive into the nurses, they have been in briefings every Friday with Dr. Chen and he gives some very updated information. So for students that have symptoms that are, uh, conditioned such as asthma or allergies and that's on a normal basis, they might not have to be, uh, quarantined or removed from school. But these are the decisions that the nurse will, uh, work with DHHS on for those specific students. Um, so as far as those underlying conditions and things like that, that, uh, would be helped through the health department. Um, and then we need to look at, and this goes back to that staffing. We will make sure that if there is a child that is quarantined or a child that has to be out, that we will provide education for them. I can't at this time tell you exactly what that would look like. It's going to depend on if we have teachers that are on full remote for which grade levels. We have, um, some staff in the building that would be able to, would be able to provide them with, uh, remote instruction. But at this time, I couldn't tell you exactly what it looks like. It comes down to the numbers of, uh, how many kids are in the building so that I could look at which staff members are available to provide that. But there is no way that I, we would let a child be on quarantine and not provide something for them. That to me is just, we will get it done.
Thank you. I appreciate you educating our kids. And just one other question, uh, you mentioned about letters going out. Are those going out, um, from the principals or do you know if they're going out on a district level so that everyone has a uniform message?
Yeah. Ms. Gerst, I believe is going to touch on that when she shares her, um, her information. That'll be something that she will discuss in more detail.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Uh, Andy, this is Anne. I have a question on page 10 where it says that, um, full remote learning for, through V-Lax and then full remote learning V-Lax in, um, United Arts through Pembroke Hill. What is the youngest grade that V-Lax accepts?
I, um, I'm actually really glad you asked the V-Lax question because I met with them today at 2:30 so I can clear up the whole waitlist. Um, question that's out there. V-Lax has now, they're all the way to kindergarten. Um, they just implemented kindergarten through, uh, fifth grade, I believe, or fourth grade. And they do offer, um, now UAs. At the time that this was written, we had not had that information. So we wanted to make sure that if a child chose V-Lax, that we would still look at how to provide a UA through Pembroke if possible. Um, and then representative I spoke to today said that the way V-Lax works is a child will enroll in a class, but once they finish it, then another spot opens. So it's like a rolling admission. So she said if a child finishes a class, say today, another spot opens up tomorrow. So that means that a child may not start school on the same day if they were to be physically in the building, but they could have another position or another spot open. That does not bring certainty to a time when we are looking for a little more certainty. Um, so she does encourage people, uh, parents who are looking at V-Lax to enroll their child. Um, and they do expect those waitlist spots to move rather quickly as, um, they hire new teachers or children finish, um, their courses.
Thank you. I, I can probably think about, uh, when a lot of the teachers are concerned about coming and having to be in direct contact with children that they may look at, um, you know, teaching at, at V-Lax. Uh, the other question I have is just something that I haven't seen in any one of these proposals is, would the teachers be doing a little video, "Hey, great to meet you." Um, and they would be able to access this on yours, on your webpage or your Facebook page?
Our plan at Hill, um, is to provide a sort of a remote, uh, back to open house kind of thing. We would love, we are going to work on having, um, a Zoom style, whether it's Google Meet, um, so the kids would be able to see their classroom, meet their teacher prior to them coming into the building for our littles. That's so important that they get that initial meet. Um, so for us, I know on our end, we've talked a little bit about that, but that's more, um, as we dive a, a bit deeper.
So if we do go 100% remote, those videos will be sent just to the individual students? Or would that be something that they could access, uh, access on your, um, on your webpage?
I don't think I have thought about it in, as in-depth as that yet. Um, I don't foresee an issue of posting little welcome I don't foresee an issue of posting little welcome videos on the website if that's something that, you know, would help everybody out there, but I would, you know, like to talk a little bit more with the staff. They have some really creative ideas. I've been working with our kindergarten team. They're phenomenal. I'm very excited to meet everybody and kind of work with everyone this year. So I'd love to get their input because they tend to be a bit more creative than I am with that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Others?
I'll jump in then. I think my questions that I asked the previous gentleman as far as busing and the ability to meet social distancing guidelines, you answered quite clearly, so I don't need to rehash that. I did, you mentioned, and I noticed in the plan that masks wouldn't be required at recess. I certainly I like that every plan has said that there would be mask breaks. But I question, I guess, the motivation for the no masks at recess decision only in as much as, you know, it seems like the five, six, seven-year-olds are the least reliable to maintain social distancing, especially out on a playground. So it seems like masks may be more important for that age group. So I'm just wondering where that decision came from.
We spent a lot of time talking about layers. I know we've heard all about the Swiss cheese model and how you're trying to cover up the holes. So when we looked at outside, being outside, we know is one of those things that really reduces transmission. A big concern that our staff had was being indoors for long-term exposure. When you're outside, the kids are, they're flitting in and out, and they're all over the place. So they're not really, especially at, you know, when you're in middle school, they like to congregate together because they're all talking. But in elementary, they tend to be all over the place, and it's really quick interactions. So that was our thought process behind it. But obviously, if that was something that, you know, the board wished to look at a little bit deeper, we would. But in our case, we felt like the exposure time would be extremely minimal. They're already outside, so we're, you know, we're adding a layer to this. And we would work with them as far as what social distancing could look like outside so that if we see the kids starting to congregate, we might be able to, you know, help them back up a little bit. So when we looked at it, we felt like we had enough layers added to it to safely make that recommendation.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. A lot of the CDC guidelines saying that grade two and younger should not be required to wear masks, and I'm just looking at the reference page for that. But I wanted to find out, there's a lot of creative ideas out there for separation of children. One of my co-selectmen says, you know, what about this divider that is see-through? They can see their teacher. And, you know, just to keep more of the contaminations to themselves? Is that something that you might think about?
Dividers, we've had lots of conversations about dividers, and I think possibly if Josh Coughlin, he jumps in, he's got a very detailed explanation as far as dividers go. We've talked about all of these things and thought about them. And I would be interested as far as the CDC guidance goes, I, you know, with the, I thought we looked at it was under the age of two should not wear masks. So when we were looking at that, that was where we got the, everybody could wear a mask. But Josh Coughlin would definitely have a lot more information on dividers, but we have absolutely considered our abilities and resources with that.
If I could answer that now, Anne?
Sure, Josh.
So we have looked at dividers, and when dividers first came out, because they only came out due to the pandemic for the most part, they were roughly $150 to $300 apiece. You multiply that by 1,400 students, and there was going to be a serious fiscal impact. Dividers have come down in price within the last couple of months. But the other side of that is adding six sides to disinfect every single night. And the expectation that somehow this is going to get done throughout the day was an astronomical task that we didn't feel. We feel we're going to struggle in disinfect everything that we possibly can every single night, and to add six sides of a divider was going to delay that process. So that's our thought process with the dividers right now.
Thank you. I was under the assumption that it was a fogging machine for the disinfectants?
So we have bought electrostatic sprayers, which is going to allow us to cover a lot more ground and do a lot better of a job throughout the night. But there's still a lot of area to cover.
Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
Anne, this is April. I just have an idea regarding with Josh saying about the six sides. I know as parents, often we have to teach our children certain skills, so I'm just wondering, any thought, has any thought gone into, instead of giving the task of cleaning each student's desk and the sides of the divider, that at the end of the class day, part of wrapping up is just giving the student the tools to do that themselves? To me, we need to teach them, that's a life skill, how to clean up after yourself or leave something clean. Just a thought.
So to answer that on our end, we've never asked the students or staff to clean due to the liability specifically on the student's end with whatever chemical should be in their hand. We have policies in place that only certain chemicals can come and go that the district buys, that we have a lot of fears that now that COVID is going on, how are we going to police that coming and going? And what we have in the building supplied by us needs to be managed by us. And if it gets in the hands, say, of a student, and the student does something that they shouldn't with, that's a severe liability on our end.
Thanks, Josh. Other questions?
Thanks, Andy. This is Amy. Let me just get to my notes. Can you explain what a hand washing station means? I mean, does that mean like go to a sink in the bathroom, or does that mean something different?
No, we just mean any area that, such as a sink in the bathroom. We have sinks in every classroom. And it's, you know, the little things like when you have an entire group of students coming in, even just getting 10 of them to wash their hands can take upwards of 10 to 15 minutes. So we are just very aware of having them congregate, and since we have so many of them, I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that.
Okay. I think that's all I had specific to Hill School. Thank you.
Any others?
Andy, I have a question, but it's not particularly any particular schools. It's right at the beginning of the reentry plan. Is that something we can ask later?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we do. So I think we've got Assistant Superintendent Gersha, who's going to give us a little bit of update on some special ed stuff. Mr. Coughlin's going to give us a little bit more information on some facility stuff. And Ms. Wheeler's going to give us some information on conversation around transportation and food service. So I guess if it's not related to one of those things and you want to throw it in now, go ahead. If you want to wait until after those people, that's fine too, whatever you want to do.
Thank you, Andy. It's the first page after the Pembroke School District outline. It's not numbered, but it says instructional model to start the year. It says at the very bottom, a Pembroke Academy, 63% of the staff are in favor. At Pembroke Hill School, staff chose a hybrid and a ranking model, but there's no number, and Three Rivers has 55. So I didn't know if we knew the percentage of Pembroke Hill.
I'd have to go back in and do the math on that one to give you that answer. What we did was I asked staff to choose to rank all three options. And then when we looked at that, I can provide you with the specific numbers. As far as they chose, the majority chose first was a hybrid model. The second would, I then would be full in, and the third choice was remote. So I would, I can provide you with those specific numbers, but I don't have them in percentage form.
Thank you. I was just looking to see if it was, you know, neck and neck, maybe 1% or 2%. So I just didn't know. It just said the high, you know, they chose. That would be great. Thank you very much.
All right, if there are no others, we will move on to Ms. Gersha, if you're available.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. First of all, I want to start off by thanking publicly all the special educators or related service personnel who really persevered through the spring and now into the summertime to provide services to all our children as best as they can, while at the same time providing the instruction and services. They were also navigating all the paperwork and all the regulatory pieces that are part of special ed. And they did a fantastic job with making sure that those kinds of things were in place and compliance was followed. I first want to address the letters that were discussed earlier. There is an executive order, number 48, from Governor Sununu that states that within the first 30 days of school, that every special ed team is required to consider whether the child that is identified requires what we're calling them COVID-related services in case that they were not able to meet their targets and goals or were not able to be successfully serviced through the remote model in the spring. It worked fabulous for some kids. Some kids really took to the remote model of instruction through therapies, and for other kids, it did not work as well. So each of those are individual cases. Those are IEP teams who will be meeting. The letters will go out from the special ed coordinators in each school and offer the parents the option of having, as allowed by the state, an option of having the meeting within 30 days, postponing the meeting so that more data could be collected once the student is back in whatever model we come back in or waiving the meeting entirely. It's totally the parent's choice for those three options, and those meetings will be scheduled according to that parental preference. So those will all be going out within the next couple of weeks so that parents receive those before the school year begins. So one of the things that we've been working on, and we've been meeting consistently through the springtime and now into the summer with the special education coordinators, is developing a plan for how services could be delivered in each of the models. We fully recognize that those are still individual IEP team decisions within the models. So if we were full in-person, related service and special education services would be delivered in person with all CDC guidance. And those providers, the educators and providers, may be wearing masks, shields, gowns, and gloves for delivery of the therapies. Some of those are very hand-on therapies, and it depends on the individual student, what is going to be used. Plexiglass shields may also be used because in cases of, for example, speech therapy, you need to be able to see the related service providers, the speech and language pathologists. You need to see their face to be able to model sounds and those kinds of things. The same thing with reading specialists as children learn their sounds. For special programs such as the Bridge Program or Bridge Junior at Pembroke Hill School or some of the special programs at Pembroke Academy such as Skills Transition. Again, all the CDC guidelines we followed. And teachers and related service providers and paraprofessionals may be wearing those masks, shields, gloves, gowns in any of those programs, as well as the use of the Plexiglass shields. In full in-person, the paraprofessional services were delivered, again, maintaining all those CDC protocols for safety for the staff and the student. Evaluations will be held in-person. Those are the triennial evaluations that are required. And those will be administered with those same protocols in place. In all cases, whether we decide on full person, hybrid, or remote, all IEP team meetings will be held remotely, and that is to diminish the number of individuals coming into the building. And we have found that parents, for the most part, have enjoyed that often. They feel that it's very accessible, that they don't have to get babysitters for the younger children. If they're working parents, they could step out for half an hour instead of taking a half a day off of work to attend an IEP team meeting. So we are going to, for the foreseeable future, maintain those remote IEP team meetings regardless of how that is implemented. With hybrid, the hybrid model, again, all those protocols I've previously spoken about will be in place. The difference is that students on the days that they are in the in the school building will receive those services as much as possible. But in some cases, students receive more services than the two or three days they might be in the building. They might be brought in for an additional day, or the additional services may be held remotely. Again, those are individual IEP team decisions to decide how to deliver those services for that child. That is the biggest difference of the hybrid model. The paraprofessional services will be available to students, again, according to the IEP team, even in the hybrid model on the remote days. So the paraprofessionals will be checking in with students, working with them, maybe on individual pieces of completing assignments, checking for understanding, reteaching, pre-teaching, those kinds of things that are usually set up by the case managers and sometimes carried out by the paraprofessionals as a reinforcement to learning, not as a replacement for learning or instruction by a certified teacher. With the hybrid model, again, we will try to bring in students for their, they will be available for those evaluations as much as possible. In remote learning model, the students will have an option to have in-person services. If you're really strongly that that's an IEP team decision, there are some parents who will who will want that, and there are some parents who will not want to bring their students into school or have those students come into school for that. The special programs and student-specific instruction will be delivered remotely if it's for a special program. And then paraprofessional support will be provided with the remote access also. And the IEP teams will decide whether or not to bring students in for evaluations or whether to waive current evaluations and use existing data to continue their identification and to have those evaluations occur at a later date when they might be able to access the building. So the biggest piece, I think, is that we are availing ourselves as much as possible to have students in, receiving services in person. There are the things that need to be considered for that. Certainly, a staff availability. There are some related service and special education staff who may not be able to deliver in-person services, and we need to consider that. There will be cases where, you know, there might, if you only have one speech and language pathologist in the building and they end up being sick or something like that, we'll have to figure out how those services can be delivered or delayed in such a way that doesn't harm student progress. The options of bringing students into the buildings on their non-scheduled school days would require possibly some transportation. We would ask parents to bring in for those extra services on those other days that the student wasn't in the building. We would ask them to bring the child in, but if they were not able to, we would have to transport students to receive those services in the building. So that is not something that has been budgeted, so that would be an additional cost. Does anyone have any questions?
Andy, this is Anne. I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
When you were discussing that the special ed employees who will be teaching these children in the building, are you planning on all of your special ed staff to be full-time in the school, even if we're doing remote?
It was my underst- It was my understanding that the students would be remote and the staff would be in the buildings. If that's incorrect, then that could be a contractual issue or a collective bargaining issue if this, if they are the only staff that are going to be in the building. So that would have to be handled through those means.
The other question I have is that right now Pembroke School District has decided to be a hundred percent remote. How does that look for the SAU-sponsored preschool? Will they not be able to attend at all now or are they a hundred percent remote also?
So the, the plan for the TLC preschool, and I've worked with the preschool coordinator on this, is at this point only to, to continue with remote. And actually, some of those kids did great with remote. It's, it's very interesting that, that children so young could be so engaged for very short periods of time. But if, if they, if we were to have any in-person, it would only be for services. We're not going to be able to run preschool because preschool, you know, the group singing, the group, all those pieces, keeping masks on three-year-olds is, is not something that is going to be able to be accomplished for in-person. So the students will just come in just to receive their services. And again, we'd have to discuss whether or not the staff, if it was all remote, whether they would just continue to do remote. There may be, and if students really required in-person and a parent felt very strongly that they required in-person and we were not able to provide the staff, we would then have to have an additional cost of possibly contracting that out to a private agency to deliver that instruction. Because we are obligated per their IEP to provide that instruction.
Thank you. I just have one other question. I'm not sure if you heard at the beginning of the meeting. There was a mom that said that her child currently has an IEP and she was not able to schedule a meeting. Is that an issue because we have a lot of children?
No, the issue, the issue at this point is because staff are not in the buildings. And they are not, not under contract and so typically meetings will be held once we get back or as soon as the teachers can come in, if the teachers are going to be able to come in. If there's a specific instance of that, I would urge anyone to contact the special ed coordinator for that building to discuss that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
This is April. I have a question for Ms. Gershah.
Sure.
You may have already answered this. Thank you for being here, by the way. I really appreciate that, Ms. Gershah. And I'm sorry if I missed this, but if, if the school is open on a hybrid model and perhaps there's a student who cannot go as an IEP because a medical condition, will they still be able to possibly obtain those services remotely instead of having our, you know, off-campus, instead of having to physically come into the building where they would be exposed?
Yes, yes, there's always that remote option. Again, you know, for students who are medically fragile, we do have. In fact, today, we had a special ed coordinators meeting with all the coordinators in the, in the district, in the SAU actually, and we discussed those specific kind of instances and what we could do. And remote is always possibility. And again, you know, we don't want any students to, to miss their specialized instruction or related service because they can't access the building. The other piece is that if it was the case that a student required in-person, if they weren't able to access remote learning and it was a medical issue of some sort and they could not come into the building, we would consider, again, at additional cost, the team could consider hiring someone to go into the, into the home through a private agency, not through, not through the, you know, the, the school staff. The school staff will not be going into homes to provide services. We would have to contract out.
Thank you. One other question is I was contacted by a parent who is considering home education in, in compliance with the one ninety-three dash A. And the question that was asking me, and I know that you're much more qualified than me to answer this question, is what happens when a student has an IEP and decides to withdraw from schools during this pandemic? Is there any option for that child to still receive special education at public expense?
Well, once, once a parent chooses home education, there is no obligation to provide special ed. The child is on trial fine until the time they return to, return to the public school.
And my, my understanding is this board could make a policy that changes that based on state statute that says that we can provide optional services. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Others? I've got one. It's not really a question, more of a request. After we make a decision on which model we will be pursuing, I would appreciate any sort of document that could be created. I know that the plans have a page or so about special ed in them. But I think that with the changes that would be present, it would be, it would be responsible to provide as in-depth as we can, a lot of the stuff that you just mentioned tonight, so that the parents have a clear document that they can reference for expectations, that the school board can reference to make sure we're upholding those expectations and that sort of thing. So, you know, once you've got some direction, it would be great to see a document.
So the document that I prepared, I believe it was uploaded to the, to the board site. I'm not sure if you were all able to access it. And actually, today I went in after our meeting and made a few changes, a few additions to that, and that would be what would be released to parents. We would want to make sure. There is approximately, just in Pembroke, in Pembroke schools, about two hundred and seventy-five identified students between, you know, pre-K through twelve that Pembroke services and certainly I would want to make that available to all of them and as well as it would be uploaded to, to the website.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Gershah before we move on?
This is Anne. I just want to say thank you for outlining that because if we have it, if we have a document, you know, it's very easy to refer to back, back to. Thank you.
You're welcome. I like to make things as easy as possible. You guys have so much information you're processing.
Great. If that's it, I just lost my little outline email. I think Josh was next. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by also thanking my, our facilities crew. Our buildings, our grounds, our facilities have never looked as clean and as fresh as they, they do now. We're really accomplishing many tasks that are those someday will get to them while COVID has allowed us to get to them. So the crew's been hard at work and bussing the rear to make the facility shine. So with that, the facilities crew has bought in four electrostatic sprayers. A lot of talk about those within the industry prior to this and specifically now COVID-related. We were able to attain four of them. Moving forward, we would more than likely like to retain more of those specifically for our night custodians. We ordered these electrostatic sprayers in the beginning of April and we just received them last Monday. We called our vendor to thank them and he said we were very lucky because the rest of his orders were being canceled because of the worldwide pandemic. It's very tough to secure these. We got them at a very reasonable rate and the ones you can get out there on the market right now are, the cost is astronomical. So we have secured those. We are working out a plan to implement those. The crew has been playing around with them all week. But one thing that's important, as much as it's going to allow us to disinfect and cover a broader area, we still have to sanitize the building. You can't disinfect over dirt. You can't disinfect over food. That still needs to be cleaned before we can do the disinfecting. So we're working out that plan. Other areas we are supporting in is signage within the buildings. We have worked with local vendors to secure signage for the floors, directional arrows, keep six feet apart, exit here, exit, enter there, stanchions to direct flows in cafeterias or broader areas. Many of the stuff we have on site, we're working on getting out into the buildings and to each individuals. A lot of the stuff is backordered and that's part of our problem with many areas that we're dealing with is if we ordered today, we can't get it necessarily tomorrow like we, we normally would have. Some of those we've bought and many of those signage areas we are trying to create on our own to save it, save fiscally. We're also supporting the secondary nurse rooms. We've ordered extra beds, extra dividers in securing as much PPE as possible for those areas. PPE specifically, we have secured disposable masks, KN ninety-five masks, no-touch thermometers, alcohol wipes, disposable gowns, nitro gloves, which are very, very hard to get right now, face shields, sneeze guards and Plexiglass we have on site for as the staff comes in. We hope to be able to meet their needs. Most of those items were secured through the state throughout the summer for free. We are in the times where it's time to start purchasing. As an example, we have about six to seven thousand disposable masks on hand, all free. Many have been used throughout the summer, probably three to four thousand. And we're looking to order and make an order of about ten thousand by the end of this week, early next week, as we do need to have those on hand. Fiscally, to give you an example of masks, if we were to give each person coming into our buildings a mask, one mask per day, roughly fourteen hundred students, four hundred staff, times fifty cents a mask is nine hundred dollars per day. It's four, forty-five hundred dollars per week is north of a hundred thousand dollars for the school year. Other areas, we have roughly fifteen to sixteen hundred bottles of hand sanitizer that are, we are required to have in each room, even the rooms that we have hot water, sinks and soap. Again, that's a fiscal impact. We were not able to secure any of those through the state and those are roughly five dollars per bottle. One bottle per week, two hundred rooms within the district is over a thousand dollars per week. Other areas, we have many cases of disinfectant and sanitizer on hand. That, that amount is going to go up from our daily use. The sprayers alone are going to go through a lot of disinfectant. We're looking at securing spray bottles with labels and microfiber cloths to house in the classrooms as well, which is something we wouldn't have done in the past. I said earlier, a big thing with the chemicals and the wipes, we still have to abide by policies. We still have to abide by codes. We still have to keep a safety data sheet manual for the district within each building, which is very important of why we need to police what's coming and going for safety's sake, for liability's sake. With that, we're looking at our dumpsters right now. We've gone from a hundred years of building up and working to get to the recycling world to all of a sudden we're back into a disposable world. All our dumpsters get emptied once a week. Right now, we see that increasing significantly as well as our trash bag usage. HVAC is a big question. Many areas in our buildings, we're supplying fresh air. Some areas, we can't get fresh air. In worst-case situation, in areas, we have windows that supply fresh air. Ninety-nine percent of the buildings take out the bad air, but in some of those areas, we do not bring in the, the fresh air. Ways to get around that is A, upgrade the systems, which is within, at the Hill School specifically, it's part of the Hill School Committee's renovation committee. They are aware of it. We look to get that into that, those plans. The other areas are at Pembroke Academy, which are already labeled on our capital improvement plan. We know them. We're aware of them. We're working to upgrade them. Short-term fixes with that is we could bring in HEPA filters for roughly a thousand dollars apiece with, with the added filters that come with it and we would need maybe fifty of those within the district. Other areas I've concerned are fans and window units. Those have been proven to just blow this around. We have many fans within the district. We have many window AC units in the district because many of those classroom areas are extremely hot and those will not be allowed to be used because it's not bringing in the fresh air and exhale and the bad air. It's blowing the air around and not working as the HVAC is intended. And that's where facilities is at.
Thanks, Josh. Questions for Josh?
Andy, this is Anne. I have a question. So the CARES Act funding, is that funding all used up or are we going to use that for the supplies that we need?
So on my, on my end, on the facilities, we secured an amount for PPE, et cetera. And on the other end, we secured an amount and the principals could speak better to the, for the technology portion of what's needed for our kids.
I, I actually have an update on the CARES grant that I can give you later. I broke everything out.
Thank you, Patty. I was just looking at the items that he listed daily would be purchased through that CARES Act.
Other questions for Josh?
Thanks, Andy. This is Amy. I have a couple. The, again, with a disclaimer, I'm not an HVAC expert by any means, but I've been trying to gather as much information as I can to make sure that our schools open safely. So the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers, ASHRAE, which is a group that I'm familiar a little bit with from some of my day job, they came out with a guidance document for reopening schools from their epidemic task force from July seventeenth, twenty twenty. I don't want to get into sort of all the nuts and bolts and weeds of exactly what they're recommending for facilities. I just wanted to know if that's something that we're looking at?
Yeah, so we're looking at, at that every day. And specifically, one thing on that document that I failed to mention is our filters within our HVAC. The way they rate filters is they use a term called MERV. It's just the way they rate them. We use a MERV eight any given, at any given point. That's what we use. They're recommending a MERV thirteen. Again, this is a worldwide pandemic. Many items, it's just impossible to get. So we've looked into the MERV thirteens. We can get very minimal of those with our next best option of a MERV eleven. Again, we're, we're, we're looking to upgrade. It's a, it's a fiscal impact and we can't just upgrade one. We have to upgrade them all and then we have to have multiple of them on, multiple of them in stock. A, to change routinely, B, to change in worst-case situations. So right now, we're not there, but we are in the process of that.
Can I just do a follow-up? And it's the same question that I've had for other folks and, you know, I'm sorry for putting people on the spot here, but any best guess at timeline for meeting these recommendations?
For the MERVs?
All of the recommendations in this.
So the HEPA filters I could get within two weeks. That was with the understanding that if we were to order fifty or sixty, who knows? But if I ordered one HEPA filter today, I could get it within a couple of weeks. That changes minute by minute, hour by hour. The filters are roughly five to six weeks at a minimum. And again, that, that's all a moving target. So we could order, we could talk, we could order something today and it- and it hits a system. By the time it gets goes to get pulled, it we could be off the list.
Yep. Similar but different, are you guys looking at the startup and flushing procedures versus for facilities temporary closed? Temporarily closed that the Department of Environmental Services put out in May?
Yeah, so we we do, we were ahead of that game. We're flushing before they come in anyways and we're flushing throughout the day, bringing fresh air in, flushing it out and then doing it again at the end of the night. Maybe four, five, six years ago, we took it from going if if say Pembroke Academy opens at 6:00 AM. We're starting our HVAC to flush that around 2:00 or 3:00 AM to really get that fresh air out. So we're ahead of that. We're actually, we'll take that up a notch and should we go, whether it's hybrid or all-in or anyone in, we'll run it 24/7, to be quite honest, and and that's what they're recommending.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, this is Ian. I have a question for Josh.
Sure.
When you were mentioning that not all the rooms have fresh air, which schools and which rooms, like which grades?
So I I'd have to look, I I don't have that in front of me, to be honest with you. But it specifically, it's the Hill School and it's Pembroke Academy. There are areas that our HVAC unit doesn't bring fresh air in. Our option of fresh air coming into those areas to for the percentages is open your window.
Okay, so I have not been able to sit on CIP because other selectmen beat me to it. But has the, has those issues been addressed on the CIP prior? I was reading over the architect design, 220 something pages and they were concerned about Hill School, the kindergarten first grade?
Yeah, so I I know that area as the the basement hallway. So it's the oldest part of the building. The 1985 part has what's known as unit ventilators. In the Hill School specifically, isn't necessarily on that capital improvement plan because it's on the renovation committees plan. So we didn't want to double dip on those and make it look like two, two different figures as opposed to being outright honest and having it on one figure. Where you will see it as unit ventilators within our capital improvement plan and that would be specifically for Pembroke Academy in the areas where they need fresh air intake.
So he'll won't be addressed until we look at the renovation?
From where we were to, as of yesterday, per se. Times, times are changing. Yep.
Yes.
And and part of, part of our CIP plan is we didn't really want to take on a big fiscal task to have it just demoed if at some point a renovation happens up there. We didn't want to do it twice. Yep.
Yes, thank you very much, Josh.
Yep.
Hi, Josh. It's Gene. Anne just got my my first question there. Secondly, as far as the PPEs goes, the masks, the the shields. Not planning on providing for everyone, is that correct?
So my understanding and the way I'm going about is, is I'm hopeful that people will come into our buildings with masks. But I need to have on hand masks for anyone that doesn't come on, come in the building with them. The answer to every question, whether it's HVAC, whether it's the spread, whether it's anything, if we're wearing that mask, that's the answer they're giving us. Is the correct answer. So take the HVAC and take those fresh, non-fresh air areas or the areas we're bringing in the windows, fresh air in the windows, the mask is what's going to prevent that. So again, on my end, I'm hoping. But again, I have about 6 to 7,000 masks and I'm about to make an order. A substantial order because the well's running dry on the free stuff and we need to get ahead of it before everybody else. And that would be with with the facilities side of the CARES funding.
Okay, thank you. Other question is, would it be helpful if you gave staff a list of approved cleaning products and sanitizers, whatever the case may be, so that they can, if they so choose, provide their own for themselves that they want to clean during the day? You know, you know, between classes, whatever the case may be?
So again, policing that's going to be very, very tough. That's been proven throughout time. Throughout time, we've had a list of, say, wipes you could bring in that we've covered under the SDS manual. But the problem is, is if we have one or two or three products in that manual, that's going to cover us to allow staff to bring them in. You can't necessarily get those. So you might be able to get a lemon fresh today, but tomorrow it's only a clean scent fresh. And and to change that SDS manual and to keep up with that and to police that is a nightmare in the sense of where I feel we should be providing each classroom with some microfiber rags and some labeled disinfectant.
Okay. And the third question I had, we're going to be taking temperatures as the students and I assume staff come into the school. If I remember correctly, you were purchasing purchasing the thermometers. Is that correct?
So right now, we've, we've been able to secure probably 40 thermometers through the state. Each nurse has six. And like some of the summer groups going on right now, they each have them and we have roughly 25 on hand.
And these are the instant read trigger?
Yeah, you put them right up to your head. So other than that, I haven't been asked to buy more or to to secure more. And I don't know if that changes or not. As with everything, it's it's a very fluid situation.
The the one thing I would ask is if that you get into a position where you can't get the PPEs, the cleaning supplies, that you let us know immediately. What we can do about it, I don't know, just so we're aware, you know, rather than every two weeks if something happens, let us know. So we're not surprised by it. Two weeks, hey, we can't get masks anymore, gloves or whatever the case may be.
Absolutely. And just to add to that, we actually have probably what in the past would have been a year's worth of disinfectant and sanitizer on site that we secured after a sleepless night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Josh?
Andy, I have a resident sending me a note. In the good old days, we would get a list of how many pencils your child needs, how many books your child needs, how many folders. I have a parent here saying, hey, I will buy a week's supply of masks for my kid's classroom if I can get my kid back in school. Would that be something that obviously would go directly to the school, the parent wouldn't be bringing again because it could have something on it? Is that something that maybe Patty could answer? I'm not sure if Josh can?
Well, I can answer it a little bit. Right now, we we have worked with our PALS group, our parent organization. And if that was the case, I would recommend they reach out to them as PAL is is out there promoting and trying to secure items such as those. So I would just ask to keep it simple and again, to manageable to possibly work with them and who are working with us.
Thank you.
And I would, I just want to throw something in here. I think we need to be very careful about taking questions that residents are sending us in real time. I'm getting texts and stuff too. But we have public comment section in the meeting and I don't, I don't think that it's fair if we are taking direct questions from people watching right now. It doesn't give everybody the same opportunity to have their questions answered. Josh, I've got a couple for you. I I guess I gotta push a little bit harder on the HVAC stuff. I'm, can you ballpark it for us? You said TRS is all set, correct?
Yes.
So as far as PA and and Hill, can you, can you give us a ballpark percentage of space in those buildings where there are concerns or guidelines not met?
So the Hill School would be the lower wing. I call it the boiler room wing hallway. Wendy might be able to help me out with the grade level and then the adjacent hallway next to it. It's pos- it's approximately 12 classrooms with some small office areas, maybe.
That was my next question. Are we talking classrooms? That's, that's important. What about PA?
Pembroke Academy is roughly 10 to 15 classrooms and then a bunch of small areas and that's where you know, with everything is where's the line drawn? Are we talking storage rooms? Are we talking boiler rooms? Are we talking small offices where the individual might work out of, but they do all their services elsewhere? So there might be 30 areas, but two-thirds of those are very, very small areas to include many of what I would say my storage rooms and my boiler rooms. But 10 to 15, maybe academic areas.
Thank you. That's helpful. You mentioned the electrostatic sprayers. I'm, I just missed the number. Did you say we got two of those?
We got four.
We got four. So we've got more than enough for one per building?
Yeah, well, we're going to do two for Pembroke Academy and we're going to do one at the other buildings. Again, we're working on our our plan of attack. We truly believe we're going to be able to execute it as we stand right now at the elementary and middle school. But we're not sure we're going to be able to get everything every night at Pembroke Academy, to be completely honest.
Sure. And then you mentioned the like window units, fans, air conditioner, stuff like that. I've read that, that documentation as well. So just to be very blunt about it, are there any, are there going to be any cooling options for those spaces that you that you're aware of when, you know, in September, when it's still hot out?
Not unless we somehow spec out a a central HVAC unit system and have it miraculously installed by then.
So and then you said the HEPA filters. We haven't ordered those, but it's something you have, you could get availability for.
I could order tomorrow.
And is that something that, is that a like one per room type deal? I I think what I'm hearing between Hill and PA, we're talking in the area of 20 to 25 teaching spaces. Is is that a, we need one of these for each of those rooms type of deal?
That would be the expectation.
Okay. And what, what did, I know you said it. What did you say?
Roughly $1,000 apart, apiece with some extra filters.
Okay, so we'd be talking in the neighborhood of 25K to outfit those rooms in some fashion.
I would call it 40, just to be safe, but yes.
Thanks. Other questions for Mr. Coughlin before we move on?
Just thought, coattailing, I meant to ask you about the HEPA filters earlier. So these, these systems will take the place of the HVAC that's in the other rooms that actually have the the air transfer?
So it won't take the place of the HVAC because the HVAC is is in turn, heating or air conditioning or ventilation. What it's going to do is take that air, that stagnant air in those rooms that might be there and it's going to bring it in, it's going to clean it and it's going to dish it right back out into the same room.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you feel confident that that'll do what the other system is doing?
I feel confident that's what they're recommending, but I mean, my honest opinion is that with every single item we look at, whether it's what they say is right or what we say is right or what somebody else says is right, that there's five questions you can come out and and be against with any, any item you might complete. So that's, that's where I feel confident with. But a HEPA filter, a HEPA air scrubber will help.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Last call for questions for Josh. Great. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Wheeler, if you're on the line, you've got the floor.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I know you've heard a little bit about transportation and food service and I'll fill you in on a little bit more that I also know. I'll start with transportation. I know that's a big one. And thank you very much for all the administrators for the information they have given. The information they have given is accurate. I've spoken with Dale Transportation and it will be $90 per bus per day. So as they stated, it could end up being pretty substantial. It will depend on how many students do the board would prefer to ride the bus. They are not stating that there is any minimum number. They are allowing the board to decide how many students ride the bus. With that said, they are considering a student, a rider, per se. A sibling could equal one rider. So a brother, sister, brother, brother, sister, sister can share the same seat and they would be considered one rider, one seat. So that does help out with some numbers. So once, depending on whether we go back fully, hybrid, whatever it may be, once we have the listing for each of the families that have chosen to ride the bus, we can take a look at those family cohorts to see how many students can actually sit in the same seat and how many might have to be designated to be spaced out. With that said, they will be assigning seats. So whoever does choose to ride the bus, they will assign the seats. They are looking at options of potentially filling the bus from back to forward so that students are not walking past each other as they go down. They will enter the bus, sit in the back. Obviously, that does pose some concerns for young students that ride the bus where kindergartners, first graders and second graders typically typically would ride the bus towards the front of the bus. In this scenario, that would not be the case. They would be riding in the back of the bus, depending on how they are picked up on the route. So that is one thing to consider. They are also looking at, they, as the, as mentioned, students will need to wear a mask when they are on the bus. The drivers will have a mask when they were on the bus. There has been some discussion around the state about bus companies allowing for Plexiglas or whatever it may be to be on the bus that would block the bus driver to the students. That will not be the case. And speaking with Dale, they said that that actually would be considered a hazard. It could block the view of the students behind them. And so that will not be the case. There will be no dividers between the bus driver and the student. So that is something to to think about as well. Depending on how many students ride the bus, there could potentially be, require one or two more runs in the morning and the evening, depending on how many students ride the bus. Again, that's $90 per bus per day. And that will cover the extra fuel or whatever may be needed for those bus runs. There was anything else in particular? Those are the main points so far that we've learned. Obviously, once we receive the listing of students that we're riding the bus, it may also require routes to be rerouted. Depending on how many students are riding the bus, we obviously would want to make sure that we are maximizing whatever capacity that the board chooses for those students to ride. So it may require bus routes to be rerouted. It may also require if there are additional routes to be taken, as well as if there are additional runs, it may also cause the routes to be earlier in the morning so that we can start school on time. So let's just say a bus would typically pick up a student at 7:30. It may need to pick the student up at 7:00. So those are some other ways we're looking at trying to make sure that the school, the students start school on time. That is what I have for transportation. Would you like to take questions on that before I move to food service or would you prefer to me to move to food service?
I I think we can do transportation questions now. Keep it clean.
Sure.
Andy, this is Ian. I have a question. Amber, you were saying it's $90 a day for all of the buses we currently run?
No, for the additional charge to run an extra run, it would be 90 days, excuse me, $90 per bus per day.
Okay, so if we don't do additional runs, we don't have to incur that amount?
That is accurate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Amber. Gene.
Hi, Gene.
This is, this is more of a suggestion than anything else. I'm, I'm thinking a survey would be probably smart at this time to get a jump on.
to get a jump on who will be busing and who will be driving. Their children are carpooling with someone else to get their kids to school. Based on that response, if we get, we get a low busing number and a high driving number, we may have to consider contacting uh Pembroke PD, letting them know what's going on because it will have a severe impact on traffic in the areas of, you know, especially in the area of PA and Three Rivers, but also Hill. So, um, it's just a suggestion and it kinda, if we do that, it would get, get us out in front a little bit further than, you know, and maybe that survey goes out through Alma to, to everyone that, or as many people as can be involved and on the school websites, whatever the case may be.
Absolutely. We absolutely, we need to do a survey um to get an idea of how many students we believe may ride the bus and how many students may um decide to drive their, or how many parents may decide to drive their students. That will be crucial information in this part. Um, transportation, as you know, is going to be a huge issue. It's going to be a change regardless. It is not gonna look like it's previously looked. Um, so we, it is going to be very important that when that survey goes out, that parents take the time to complete that information because we're really going to need, need it because it will most likely cause um us to have to reroute or potential additional runs may be needed.
And it may else, it'll also cue parents to consider something they really maybe not, maybe haven't considered at this point, so.
Absolutely. And I think we may find that, you know, parents, some parents may not feel comfortable with their students being on the bus. Some of these um bus routes can be lengthy. Um, so if you're the first or second or third or fourth student that gets on that bus, they could be on that bus for quite some time. Um, so that is something that parents will need to think about, whether that is the right option for their family or whether it isn't.
And, and I think the, the information you gave us about loading from the rear probably should be included. So the parents of the younger kids know that their child might be in the very back of the bus. So they've got eyes wide open. So, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Other questions for Amber? I've got one. Um, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear and that everybody else is too. When we're talking about uh the possibility of extra buses, um, I'm assuming that that means an extra run, meaning back to back, not meaning more buses traveling all at once. Is that accurate?
That is correct. It would be the same bus or particularly one of the eight buses being utilized with additional runs or potentially more than one bus. It could be all eight buses. It all depends on um, how many students are on each bus and what the current routes currently look like. You are accurate. It is not asking Dale Transportation to provide us with an additional bus. It'd be reworking the busloads that we already have.
Okay. So, so where I was going with that then, I guess, is that um even though some kids would get picked up earlier, there's, there is a reasonable expectation that having the possibility of multiple bus runs in the morning and multiple bus runs in the afternoon would uh possibly impact the school calendar and instructional time.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's something obviously administration would need to work out. Um, we would obviously try to minimize that as much as possible, which is why Dale Transportation had mentioned potentially, you know, delegating the pickup times to be earlier so that they could still get the time to school on time.
Andy, Andy, it's John Marston.
Sure.
Hey, John. Having a few years in the district, uh, we did, years ago, we did uh do a double runs. Um, and it was really based on families wanting young kids with older children. The difference back then, well, obviously there was a cost involved, but the difference back then was that schools had definitely different, they had a little bit different starting times and ending times. So there was a wider gap. So those runs could meet that schedule. We had four buildings at the time, but if they went to a pure double run, we would have to probably look at that opening and closing times. Not a longer day, just a different start and end time.
Thank you. Um, other questions for Amber regarding transportation before we move on to food services?
Uh, Andy, I just have one more question. I know that, that we get um a discount or our checkback, I guess, at the end of the year for any savings on fuel. So is that ninety dollars for the bus? That's including fuel or they're gonna charge us extra for the fuel?
No, that include, that ninety dollars encompasses what the extra charge would be for fuel. We typically do not receive money back from the bus, um, from the transportation company each year. This past year um was different because we were remote. So they did issue us credits. Um, but in a typical year, we would not receive money back on the contract. It was just because last year for nineteen twenty looked very different due to remote status.
Okay. So if we stay a hundred percent remote and we're not picking up any children, we still have a bus contract to pay?
Um, yes, that would be something that the board would determine. Um, but with that said, they will also issue us credits again like they did last year, last fiscal year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, transportation?
Uh, Andy, just one clarification. Sorry, it's John Marston again. Uh, and just to get to what Ann talked about, if we are fully remote, I think one of our requests would be that uh at least one bus run would be delivering lunches and meals, actually even supplies to children. So we would, we would use the bus company somewhat during full remote this time. So that's what we're paying for.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marston. That was a, another question I had. I saw um in your outline that you did say that we will be delivering the, the lunches, but thank you very much.
All right, um, Amber, if you want to do food services?
Sure. Um, this is, I feel like one of the areas that is complicated, um, more complicated than one might think, I think. Um, and the administrators did a good job, um, listing some of the areas. It will look very different. Um, specifically at PA will looks very different. Um, because they will not be going in through their typical lunch line where they have multiple choices and so forth that they will be handling themselves. Um, they have some thought processes on if students were to go into the cafeteria, they would go through uh one to four doorways in which they will, whether it be lunch A, B, C, or D. And they would receive their lunches through the door rather through the typical lunch line that they would normally get into. Um, it may look like something of asking our students to preorder lunches so that we could be prepared as to what we're prepping ahead of time. Um, most lunches will be bagged, if not all lunches will be bagged, um, to assist with um, the preparation. Um, a lot of the, um, this is to limit interaction with some of the staff within the food service, um, lunch area. Um, a lot of our staff are high risk that are in that area. So to limit the interaction um, would be extremely helpful. I know you brought up earlier, um, the fact of not, you know, requesting to do um funding through the internet or credit card or whatever may be and not through cash or check. That was to limit the interaction with the staff so that they're not collecting cash and so forth. As we know, money is extremely filthy and it carries a lot of germs. Um, and so to prevent that transaction, that was one of the reasons. That's not to say that if families would prefer to send in checks, um, mail-in checks or whatever may be, that we could not, not do that. Um, we would just have to work another solution for that. So I don't want people to feel like, oh, I only have to do this electronically. Um, we can certainly figure out another means if a family is unable to do that. Um, one of the other reasons why they chose um to mention to purchase lunch electronically is it would also help the families be able to keep track of their lunch accounts. Um, as you know, with cash, sometimes it's very easy to not remember how much money you may have sent in or how much money your student may have on their account. Um, so it would allow the student to be able to track how much money is on there a little more um easily. We also talked about, as the administrators talked about, is serving lunches in classrooms. We definitely want to keep cohorts together as much as possible. Um, obviously eating in classrooms prevent, uh, provides other challenges um that we will have to work through. Um, but that is probably what's going to happen in most of the schools, other than probably Pembroke Academy. Um, from my understanding with speaking with the administration, they will still serve lunches within the cafeteria, um, and have to try to, in some way, space them out. I'm not quite sure. That's a lot of, you know, we'll have to work through those details um, as we go along, but they will still be provided the lunch that they typically will have. Um, it just will look a little bit different. If we go remote, fully, if we stay remote, um, we will provide lunches as we have during this, as we did during the spring. Um, and as um Mr. Marston noted, we will and can provide lunches using, utilizing the bus system this time. I know there were some families that had some difficulties getting to the school to pick up lunches. Um, so there are certainly, that is something we will work through to be sure that everybody can obtain a lunch that needs one.
Thank you. Um, food service questions?
Andy, I have a, a question concerning lunches at PA if we're a hundred percent remote. Will there still be a staff that the students can come? I know the lower grades, we will have a bus, but for PA, we do not supply busing?
Well, I, well, we wouldn't provide busing for the students, but we can still work as an, as a Pembroke School District to utilize whatever buses that we have on hand. I mean, certainly if the school district is, is paying for eight buses, we can certainly figure out a way to make sure that whether you're at um Three Rivers, uh, Hill School or Pembroke Academy, those students would get a lunch. Um, we have not firmly worked out a plan as to what that would look like if it's remote. Certainly, once the decision is made, hopefully this evening, um, full plans on whatever plan that you choose will be worked out so that we have a lot more details on how we provide lunch to um any and all students who wish to have some.
Amber, I'm sorry. I, I wasn't clear. Um, yes, we will do busing for the elementary, but if we have a PA student who needs to get a lunch, will there be um an extra way, you know, like we did last season for them just to get a lunch outside of the cafeteria? For the high school, just the high school to the student?
No, I, yeah, and I, and I did understand your question. So maybe I was not clear. Um, it's under my understanding that regardless of what school they are in, a lunch will be provided and it can be on that same bus. Even though we don't currently have a high school bus that does high school students, that doesn't mean that we can't utilize that bus to provide lunch for a high school student.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other food service questions?
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. I just want to say thank you for, for Amber. We did have a lot of residents um email me. Um, they just wanted to be able to mail a physical check to the school ahead of time and I appreciate you outlining that tonight.
You're very welcome.
Any others? Okay, um, then, um, I think I'm gonna ask Patty to speak to the school calendar a bit and then we can, if there, if the board members have any other questions that are aimed at anything that anybody has said that you want to get in, um, we can, we can go back to some board questions after the question of the calendar.
Andy, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot I had a question concerning uh, not specifically food service. Um, but it brought it into my head uh with and uh, TRS were talking about students being in the classroom. Um, I just want to make sure that the teachers will get their contractual unencumbered time, uh, even though we're doing, you know, the in-classroom lunch. Essentially, so I hope Patty can speak to that.
You're a little quiet tonight. Jean, Patty, did you hear the question?
Was he asking about the contractual um lunches for staff?
Right. If the students are eating in the classroom, will staff get their lunches?
Yes, absolutely. We are obligated to provide an unencumbered lunch period. So it's gonna be another part of our puzzle that we have to solve, um, to rotate staff and make sure everybody gets a lunch. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Patty, uh, you want to give us a rundown of the calendar suggestions?
Do you mind if I update you on V-Lax first so I don't forget? So, um, Melanie brought it up earlier, um, during public comments and, um, and then Wendy touched upon it too. We had an, I'll call it an emergency meeting. The Department of Ed called a meeting, um, pretty quickly yesterday afternoon to talk about this issue, um, when it was brought to everyone's attention that V-Lax was telling people there were, there, there were waiting lists. Um, so, you know, we're certainly not alone in our concerns and there were over a hundred superintendents on the call today. Um, scrambling and talking to the commissioner about the fact that V-Lax was something that was promoted. It was in the governor's guidance document, um, the task force um, to offer up to parents as an option. They relaxed the rules around adequacy and enrollment and we were pretty excited that we had this option. Um, so like Wendy said, the director of V-Lax, um, did assure us that even though there's a waitlist, you should still sign up. He also indicated that, um, some parents scrambled to enroll their children because they were afraid that this would happen and that there had been parents identified who had pitched fifty classes, um, and figured they would just let their child decide later. So there's all kinds of little things that need to be worked out that will open up slots for other students. Um, but they were clearly not prepared for the number of students that were going to access V-Lax. Um, so that option does make me very nervous. Um, the commissioner promised us, um, you know, su, many superintendents spoke up and said, look, our boards are looking for options and we don't have enough staff to offer the options, um, you know, to provide to families. He said he's looking into funding, um, he's looking at options for V-Lax. Um, they, they indicated that if they could receive more funding, they might be able to hire enough staff. Um, so this is absolutely, um, put a wrench in things for us and for all the other districts in the state. So I just wanted to make sure that people were clear that that conversation happened and they're working on a solution, but given the date that we're in August, um, I don't know for sure what that's gonna look like. So that's just definitely, um, something else that we need to think about.
Board members have questions around V-Lax currently?
Andy, this is April. I did attend a V-Lax open house today and I just want to share some of the concerns that I had, um, and why V-Lax may not be a viable option for remote instruction. And one is that, um, the student supply list, those, the parents are required to provide if the school district does not do so. So, um, if we're directing kids to that option and families, I strongly feel that we need to help them with the supplies to partake and complete the assignments. The other things that were identified as there's a heavy responsibility on parents. The parents are expected to monitor the student's daily work, to maintain the weekly progress for the student, to ensure that the student has content mastery and also to help with coursework navigation. That is very heavily reliable on our parents. The good part was the online curriculum looks beautiful, but it's very parent intensive. And that's a big concern as well as any barriers to supplies for only having a remote option via V-Lax. Thank you.
Uh, Andy, I have a question. How is V-Lax funded? Cause basically it's a charter school, correct? Just online?
It, it is a, a public charter school online. I can't speak to the funding. Patty, do you have that information?
They do get some state funding. I don't know the figures, um, but they do get state funding.
Thank you.
Other questions on V-Lax? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, so for the school calendar, we um have been talking to staff and other districts. I'm sure you've heard of change the start date for schools. Um, as well as reconsidered, uh, professional development for teachers. So our teachers, um, felt like if we stayed with the remote option, that one week of PD would be sufficient and they would be ready to start on August thirty-first. Um, however, if the board changes their mind, that they would need a little bit more time now for um planning and, and PD and we're thinking maybe starting after Labor Day. So I let them know that I would put that out to the board. Um, we're thinking maybe starting after Labor Day. So I let them know that I would put that out to the board. Um. I, you know, maybe it's a discussion you have after, you know, I don't know if you're planning to reconsider, um, your decision tonight, but that's something that I promised I would share and put those two options out to you.
Any follow-up questions about, um, the possibility of changing start date?
Andy, I have a question. If we start later, what does that do to the teacher's contracts, uh, contractual days? Cause I know we went to hours.
Yeah, that's a good question, Ann. We did talk about that. Um, so we were informed and I haven't, um, received official notice of this, but we were informed that the governor, um, in one of his press releases indicated that he was going to give us, um, three extra or, you know, forgive three professional development days. So much like when he switched us to remote learning, he gave schools a week to prepare for that. Um, he's giving us three days, um, this year. So if we took that first week of PD, um, we already had three days slotted towards that. It would give us two more and then, um, possibly a third to use some other time if we did intend to go back on the 31st.
Um, I have a follow-up and it might be discussed later is that because we are going to hours instead of days, how does this look for how many, how many hours or minutes? You know, a first grader is going to be accountable for in the fifth grader and a ninth grader?
So when we're in, uh, remote learning, we are allowed to count each day that we have instruction as a full school day.
So if we have a kindergarten student login for 90 minutes, that's a whole school day for them?
If we have synchronous learning this year, we'll have activities throughout the school day. Um, but yes, it doesn't have to be one-on-one days time to count as, um, instructional hours.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is April. I have another question. Um, if, if, um, we have students who do opt to use V-Lax on a part-time basis, um, will the district ensure that if a child has an IEP that those children will receive their services and support? Or were those kids, will those students go back on child find?
Um, I can address that. Um, because V-Lax is a public charter school, um, and we provide, uh, special education services, um, to any students who are residents um, of our district who attend charter schools, we would provide those special ed services to those students.
Thank you very much.
Um, if, if I could add, and I don't, Karen, if you want to clarify, uh, my understanding for V-Lax, at least for this year, again, with some changes in regulations they made, is that you can attend, you, you can take all of your classes without actually officially enrolling as a V-Lax full-time student, which means you do not have to unenroll as a Pembroke student. Um, so I assume in that case, we would still be taking care of all the services as well.
Yep, yep. That's absolutely true. So there still are students, you still, we still would receive adequacy funding for them. Um, and all the usual, you know, um, services would be provided. Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Yep.
April, again, I have another V-Lax question. Um, on the V-Lax Zoom that I sat in on today, one thing that came up is that there is a 28-day grace period that a student can drop out of the class and not receive credit after the 28 days to get an incomplete in the class that they've enrolled in. I'm curious, um, how would that affect a student's education? Because we know they have a waitlist going right now. We, so we don't really know when a student would begin that class, but if they don't complete the class, it's, they're anticipating to do that. It's too late to start the class with their normal Pembroke class. What happens to that student and their education?
Um, Dan, do you want to talk about that? Because we did ask the question about enrolling and unenrolling from V-Lax.
Yeah, sure. Um, frankly, I think some of that's up to the board, uh, whether that's tonight or later. Uh, some districts have made a distinction to say that if a student commits to remote, then they are doing that for a set period of time, whether that be a year or a semester or a trimester, whatever works best for, um, the school in terms of demarcating the, the, the year. Um, what I have suggested to the parents that I've spoken to is that they, uh, commit to, um, not making a change until the semester because us, V-Lax typically, at least at the high school level, will break content up into semester chunks. And it is, uh, easier both on the V-Lax end as well as on our end from a curricular, um, alignment standpoint for them to do that. Now, April, in your case where let's say they, they start and they're really struggling, uh, I guess in that situation, uh, we would have them come back, uh, unless the board had some other policy, we would have them come back and treat them as if they were a new student moving into town from, from Concord.
Thank you. So it sounds like we wouldn't penalize the student.
No, certainly.
Thank you.
Any other questions, um, about V-Lax or school calendar stuff?
Are we getting up district-wide questions yet?
Yep, that's, I'm just going to open that up next. Um, I've got a list, but I'll let others go first.
This is April. Um, I have a question about how staff, uh, if we're in a, uh, off-campus model where, um, services are to be provided students remotely, I have a, a question about where will staff be to provide that service? I have a stu- a parent who had reached out to me because she has, well, more than one parent who reached out because, um, she told me there's a staff member who has, um, someone they live with who's a registered sex offender, and she's very concerned about her child, uh, possibly being seen or heard by someone she hasn't authorized her child to have access to.
It's the administration's expectation, and of course, that's, this is another, something that the board's going to have to talk about, um, when you're discussing the plan, but our expectation is that whenever possible, staff is in the building. So, um, probably needing to make some accommodations for some staff, um, depending on their personal situations, but for the most part, we would love for staff to still be able to be in the building and in their classrooms and have all of their materials with them.
Thank you.
Other questions about anything that we've talked about tonight?
I guess, so I, I have a lot of questions, a lot of thoughts about this. One of the questions I have is what is the scientific basing for three-foot spacing being safe for children and staff?
It's referenced in several documents. The academy, the pediatrics document has it. Um, you know, that's something we've gone back and forth with is that three to six feet. And, you know, it's, again, we're not, so either. Um, so we're just hoping that based on the guidance of three to six feet, that we can put the desks at least three feet apart. We're always shooting for six feet, but the guidance does say three to six.
Hi, this is April again, and I think this is probably more of a question for my fellow boardmates, but I'm, um, I'd like to really pose a question that we do seek some legal counsel before we make a decision. Um, you know, we don't even have an offering distance education, school district policy, and we're talking about, you know, having a remote option, but we don't have a policy on that, so we've got to get busy on that. Uh, the other thing is, um, per New Hampshire RSA 189, it talks about reasonable rules. Is wearing a mask a reasonable rule? We need some legal guidance on that. And can the school district view to provide a student with their constitutional right to public education if they refuse to wear a mask? Those are all questions that I can just come up with, and I'm sure you guys have others that need to be answered by our legal counsel.
Um, if I might just step in, April, um, that, we have talked to our counsel a little bit, and I have a couple of different, um, mask policies that, um, Attorney Egert has started drafting for other districts, but you're absolutely right. There are policies that would need to be looked at by the board, um, code of conduct policies, um, visitor policies, facility use policies. So you're, you're right, there, there certainly is a list, um, that we would need to review and, and we do have some involvement already with legal counsel.
Superintendent Sherman, would you please provide us a list of those policies that we need to get to work on immediately to make sure we don't cause an interruption in our students' education?
Sure.
Thank you.
Others?
Question about synchronicity? I may have misunderstood, uh, two board meetings ago when we talked about what was intended by synchronous learning. Um, and I've heard a couple of different definitions and I'd like some clarity on that. So, uh, one definition could be just a set time of day. You know, school is eight to two or seven thirty to two thirty or whatever it is. And, you know, as Mr. Marston was saying, like, that's, you have to get out of bed, you got to put on a shirt, you know, like, that's the time that you have to do your academic performance. Um, another model that I heard was and during that time, you would be live interfacing with your teacher, you know, so it would be just as if you got up and went to school, except that all you did was, you know, move from your bed to the computer. Um, and your teacher would be there in live time and your peers and your class would be there in live time. Um, and that's what I would like to have for remote learning. I think that the pre-cand stuff without your teacher being on the other end is less effective. And so I'm not really clear in the hybrid and the full remote options. You know, what is the nature of synchronous teaching that would be, that would occur? And if I can get some clarity on that, that would be great.
Andy, is it okay if we have, um, each of the principals talk about it, uh, each of the different levels?
Absolutely.
Uh, I can talk about it from the high school perspective. I, I, I think, uh, you're right about synchronicity and it could look very different, uh, particularly in different grade levels. I would also say that it could look different depending on what the intent of the instruction is or what the scope and sequence of the class may be. So for instance, uh, if I am in a science class, um, and I have half of the students, there may be a lab that really should be, uh, in person as, as much as possible. Um, and then I'm working with those students doing that. The students I had the previous day, maybe they are working at home where they're reflecting on that, and then later in the class, once the lab is off and running, I could access those students remotely and conference with them. Right? So you can, you can do it in a couple of different ways, um, but I think the important part of this is that the students would follow the same schedule, uh, and that would allow them to get remediation from teachers at a set period of time rather than, you know, one of the issues we had in an asynchronous environment was that, uh, there were a number of conflicts, scheduling conflicts that were created. And, uh, there were certain times of the day that essentially created bottleneck. Maintaining that schedule, maintaining attendance and in those expectations, but then also allowing for the flexibility uh, for the teacher and the student to work out what that might look like depending on what the, what the content and intent of the lesson may be. So in, in an ideal situation, it would be nice if, you know, we could have an expectation that they are attending uh, remotely on a device, the device is at an empty desk and that's how it would work. But, you know, there are considerations in terms of bandwidth and confidentiality and other things that, that we may not be able to navigate, and I'm not quite sure about that yet. Um, but I think if we have flexibility in terms of how a student and a teacher can leverage the connectivity in classes, I think that's probably our best bet.
This is April. I have a kind of follow-up question about that. Um, so the New Hampshire DOE, they have a site on remote instruction, and on that site is a sample form to request parent or guardian release form. Um, so all we have to do is put it on school letterhead and it talks about utilizing online resources, audio and video recording. Um, and that instruction, um, will be provided to students. Um, and, you know, only for that perfect. So if someone signs that they do not to release that, is it possible that, that those students whose parents are, if a student's 18 or older has not signed that release, those students possibly could be in a different cohort than students whose parents have indeed signed the release for the classroom instruction to be video or audio recorded?
April, theoretically, that's possible, but the more confounds you add to the logistical situation, the more unlikely that is to actually materialize. So if we're already talking about, you know, staffing issues and staff may, maybe not coming into the building, and then we also have to navigate certification issues, then trying to accommodate the, you know, access of, uh, parents or the, you know, parents agreeing to, uh, their students being recorded and then working around that. I mean, theoretically, yes, it's possible, but in my opinion, unlikely that we could accommodate that.
Thank you. I would just like to point, ask my school board members to check the DOE's website for guidance regarding remote instruction in the classroom. Thank you.
Andy, this is Ann. I have a quick question.
Sure.
Now, I don't want to make this sound like it's, you know, we're being rude or we're, we're attacking, but my question is if the Pembroke School Board has already decided that this is going to be remote, would all of these questions already been flushed out with our, um, with our legal to find out if we can record a teacher sitting in the classroom? When we have already sent the surveys to the teacher saying, hey, are you coming back? I'm not sure at, at what point that we would get this information.
So we have done surveys, um, and we actually already do have a release form. It's part of the, the release form that we do every year. Um, Josh has helped us to develop our own. Um, we do get that information already.
No, but what I mean though is that we've already voted 100% remote. So I would think coming to this meeting this evening to say, hey, this is what your 100% remote looks like. But it seems like we don't have a lot of answers to what 100% remote looks like.
Um, Andy, can I make a comment in relation to that?
Sure.
Um, I echo Ann's comment. Um, what I'm about to say is not a criticism of anyone at all. In fact, I believe really strongly that everyone in the administration, um, and the teachers have been working very, very hard. Um, but the situation we find ourselves in, in my opinion, is that all of these plans, whether full-time in school or full-time remote or hybrid, the way that it's been proposed here in the A-B schedule, or some things that we're not even choosing, like, um, you know, high schoolers at home, everybody else in person, spread throughout all the buildings, you know. The three plans that have been proposed are not ready. They're, 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 they all have significant issues that are still unknown. And we are very, very fast approaching the first day of school, even if we delay the first day of school, it, that, that doesn't, that doesn't buy a lot of time. Um, and what I had hoped would happen when we voted, um, I, I'm losing track of time in pandemic land here, but I think it's about two weeks ago. Um, that school would commence remotely is that we would then set about ironing out the details for that plan. I think that if we continue to try to completely iron out every detail for all three options, we're, we're not going to be ready in time. And I would really like to encourage us to stick with opening remote and let's iron out, let's just have one thing to focus on for the next few weeks. Um, and as opposed to doing three things at once, because opposed to doing three things at once. Because what I'm seeing, and this is what happens when I try to do too many things at once, is none of them gets done very well. And it's not for lack of effort, and it's not for lack of talent. You know, the timing of the governor's guidance was not optimal, the content was, put us in a difficult position, and that's why we're in the situation we're in. It's not because anyone, you know, dropped any balls here. But the fact is, from my perspective, I really think we need to focus on what we're going to do and start filling in the details, because I think we all agree that there are a lot of unanswered questions.
So, we'd be happy to take your questions about remote learning, and I agree, Amy, it would be much appreciated if we knew tonight that we don't have to keep focusing on hybrid because it's off the table, or we, you know, we don't have to focus on a full return because we have more time to plan for that. As John said earlier, you know, that was becoming the focus. When you voted to do remote, it was like, okay, well, let's go in that direction. But then, you know, it was, okay, but we want the plan for all three. So, an extraordinary number of hours have gone into each of these plans, like you, thank you for acknowledging that. So, just trying to take that Tuesday to Friday, to get you as many details as we've worked through for those plans, so that you could see them. But you're right, and, you know, we're not any different than any other district. We certainly don't have everything ironed out and all the details ready. But I do feel like our schools are ready for remote learning, and that if you have specific questions, our principals would be happy to answer them.
Andy, this is April. In an effort to move some action forward, I would like to make a motion for staff to deliver video and/or internet-based educational instruction and support while physically present on campus at a school district property.
Just say that one more time, April.
A little bit slower, too.
Absolutely. I would like a motion for the staff to deliver video and/or internet-based educational instruction and support while physically present on campus at a school district property.
And did we have a second? I think Jean seconded.
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. So, discussion, I definitely still have a couple more questions that I would like answered before I'm ready to, to vote on that motion. Are there others that have discussion points or questions before I jump in?
Can I just clarify the motion? So, parent professionals, teachers, administrators are in the school buildings, and students are at home. Is that the basics?
So, it doesn't address where the students are, only where our staff, and, and part of that reason is we've heard the staff, well, we know we can socially distance staff. The other reason is we've heard some staff talk about how they needed some support while teaching remotely. It, it provides them that opportunity to provide that support. It also provides our staff the opportunity to teach in a familiar environment to our kids. And then, once we come back on campus, guess what? They see where they're probably going to be. And our campus is a property that we can control who is there, where we can't control that off-campus while delivering educational services. So, it doesn't address where the student is, only where our staff is located.
Can I ask a follow-up, Andy?
Sure.
So, I tried to capture the motion, April, and I, I thought it was that the staff would deliver video and internet-based education from a school district building, and then, I'm sure I'm not getting that exactly right, but why, why would it be, I guess I'm confused. To me, delivering video internet-based education creates a question, but a very strong implication that that education will be consumed outside of the district building. In other words, why would it be remote and video? Or why would it be video and internet-based if the children were in the building?
This, so, the meaning is really while providing a remote instruction, and I, I do believe the motion, um, okay, so I can amend my motion. Would you like that, Amy, to clarify that while students are receiving remote instruction?
Yes.
Okay.
To me, anyway, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you, April.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. So, I would like to amend my motion for staff to deliver remote video and/or internet-based educational instruction and support while physically present on campus at a school district property.
Is there a second for the amended motion?
I'm sorry, Andy, do you mind if I just say one thing?
Let me see if there's a second first, and then you-
Sure. Yep.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Patty.
I just want to let the board know that we did find out, Josh did a presentation at our meeting today, that we have bandwidth issues in some of our buildings that we need to work through. It's not to say they can't be there, it's not to say they can't do the instruction, but for instance, at Hill, we couldn't have every single teacher streaming at exactly the same time. So, it would just take some coordination, and I would just want you to know that that is a bandwidth issue there, and then there is a bandwidth issue in one of our other schools, I think Three Rivers, maybe. So, that just needs to be considered when you're voting on the motion. I just want you to know that.
I think it, the district's liability for someone accessing the, someone else's child, when it hasn't been authorized, that's also a great liability, especially if that's someone who does have a criminal record.
For my part, as far as discussion goes, I, I'm not comfortable with the motion as worded, simply because it, it sounds like a blanket statement, and I'm, I have heard from plenty of staff that either have health concerns themselves, or have immunocompromised parents or children living in their house. And so, I'm, I'm not in favor of a motion that, that says that all staff will be in the building. Just my take.
Andy, this is Ann, and I'm for this, because if we're asking all of our students to wear a mask, then I don't see what the difference is asking the staff, our staff to wear a mask, if they don't feel comfortable being in the building. We do have two to three teachers per building that's not going to return due to medical issues. But, in, I believe, and I'm trying to find the page, and, and P, for P A, it was stating that the teachers need to have access to the building so they can get their materials. So, why wouldn't the teachers just be teaching from the building?
This is Amy. I just want to, I think it's helpful to parse out, Andy, what you're saying into two components. One component is something we don't have any control of, because it's the law, and I know we all want to act lawfully, and that if we have a staff person who has a medical condition themselves that qualifies for taking leave, then they have to do that. Or, you know, we, we permit them to do that. The other thing that, and therefore, in this scenario of this motion, they would not be required to be in the school. Also, if someone has a compromised person at home, I don't know if FMLA would kick in, but it, again, if there are legal requirements that allow them to not have to go to the school, then they wouldn't have to go to the school. But it, it seems like, so I'm in favor of this motion as like a building block, but I think that we might want to put a couple more things onto it. Or maybe discuss some parallel motions that would go with it. For example, we might want to say, you know, following CDC recommendations, or following state recommendations for wearing a mask and keeping socially distant. But I would be in favor, Andy, if you wanted to ask April to amend this, to say, you know, to give staff the choice to be home, even if legally we're not required to allow them to be home.
Yeah, that captures some of it. Another concern that I have that I think is a very realistic concern, as far as, as far as staff being required, as it were, to be in the building, is, you know, there, there's a very realistic chance that one of them could get COVID, or a way greater chance that one of them could have COVID-like symptoms. And of course, they have leave available and things like that, but it is not much, and it will be used up if they have to be quarantined, if they have to be out of school for fourteen days. In many cases, their leave will be gone. And, well, you know, I can understand that from a legal standpoint, that maybe that's how it is. Personally, I don't feel that's fair. But even taking that off the table, if that happens to ten teachers, we don't have enough staff to run a school. So, I mean, if we say you can't teach from home, if you, if, if you're teaching remote classes, but you can't do it from home, then if you have, pair, if we have educators, paraprofessionals, whatever, that need to leave the building because they have pneumonia, or the seasonal flu, or whatever, but that qualifies under CDC or DHS guidelines of looking enough like COVID that they need to be removed from the building, I have serious concerns about how we're going to staff the schools this year, if we put too many restrictions on people needing to be in the building. And I also don't think, you know, we have trouble every year getting substitute teachers. There will not be enough. And, to be perfectly honest, if I were a substitute teacher, and a school called me and said, hey, can you come in this classroom, because the teacher's out because they had COVID, I'm not going to want to go to that classroom. So, part of it is also just, I have some real concerns about how we're going to keep enough staff able to work, if we, if we stipulate that they need to be in the building.
Andy, can I just press you for a moment, because I, I liked a lot of what April had to say, especially the, let's move the meeting forward part?
Me too.
How, how do you, can you articulate the words in a motion, or working with April's motion, that would capture what you're getting at?
Excuse me, this is Ann. I do not feel comfortable adjusting April's motion. It was, it was together, and it was presented, and it was second. I believe we need to have a vote. I don't think that it is fair to change that motion, because we just heard that the special ed director stated that her staff will have to be in the building the majority of the time. So, how is that fair for us to say, okay, special ed, you have to be in the building the majority of the time, but not the rest of the staff?
Let me clarify, Ann. I'm not asking, I'm not changing April's motion, and I'm not asking Andy to change April's motion. I'm asking Andy to articulate some ways that he would then ask if April would consider changing the motion in those ways.
This is April. As part of the discussion, I just want to say there's nothing in that motion that says that we will not apply, we will not abide by existing federal and state laws. I mean, obvious, so I want you all to keep that in mind. The intent is not to disregard federal and state laws. If someone needs an accommodation, then they need to talk to the appropriate chain of power to request that accommodation. It's not to circumvent that at all, and I want to make that clear.
Hi, this is Jean. Again, echoing April, they all, all teachers, all staff have accessed the file papers for the ADA exemptions moving forward, and we're not, I don't think she's saying, and I don't think the tone of the motion is that if a staff member, it has someone that may be compromised, or is compromised, has to be there. They just have to take the time to fill out that paperwork, file it with Human Resources at the S A U, that'll be evaluated, and they'll move forward from there. So, I'm in favor of moving this question at this point.
I'm in favor of moving this question also to a vote.
All right, I suppose we need to vote then. So, Sandy, do you have it captured? Oh, you've got some terrible feedback. Do you have your phone on, your computer on?
Would you like me to email the motion to Sandy, so she can capture it for the minutes? Or would you like me to read it once again?
I think there was an amendment to, if you have the amended one caption, or captured, you can go ahead and read that.
Absolutely. The motion was for staff to deliver video and/or internet-based remote educational instruction and support while physically present on campus at a school district property.
Okay. And as the emergency rules necessitate, we need to do this under roll call vote. Jean? Ann? Didn't get you, Ann.
All right, yes.
April?
Yes.
Who'd I miss? Amy?
Yes.
And I am a no. So, the motion carries. I would like to go ahead and say, I think that there are, I know it's quarter after ten, but I think, I think, I think that's the biggest piece of things that we needed to get done, so that the administration can have a clear direction moving forward.
Andy, I don't, Andy, I don't think we're down with this agenda item. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, just one second. I've got a few things that I want the board to consider, and to let me know if they are things that you want to tackle tonight or not, because I'm not, I, I'm on the fence if, if they should wait. So, the few things that I have that I think we need to make decisions on as a board, after we've now determined the overall model, are, I would like a motion at some point to just blanket say that we will, we will follow the guidelines of CDC, DHS, whatever it may be, as far as we possibly can for social distancing, for disinfecting, for, for anything health and safety related. I am wondering about reentry or, or mode change criteria. We've, we've made a decision to, I'm paraphrasing here, do remote learning, it sounds like. So, I think we need to discuss criteria on how long that will last. Are we looking at numbers of cases? Are we looking at positivity rate? Are we looking at a month and then re-decide? I think that's going to be important for families to, to be able to make decisions based off. Somebody mentioned it before, I think it may have been Mr. Morris, reconsideration dates. I know that at least one local school district has, has said in their plan that was voted on by their board, if, if, you know, there, we're only going to make these decisions at certain points of the year. So, that would be something. Number of kids on a bus, and then also, I think we need to tackle that school calendar question sooner rather than later. I'm open to opinions on when we should tackle all of those, or if there are other things that are on your minds.
Andy, it's Jean. As, as far as the bus goes, I don't think we can make a decision on that until we get a firm number through a survey of who will be busing and who will be driving their children to school. At that point, we'll know the numbers that we have. If we need a second run, that's the case moving forward. So, I don't have that information, so I don't think I can make that determination.
Great.
Andy, this is Ann.
This is April. I just want to state, while it's on her mind, I would really like to hear Amy's motion.
I'm good with that.
Thanks, April. My motion was going to be, I guess I was reading your mind, Andy, that, and I was going to make it limited to the, the staff that are going to be in the school, but I'm fine making a blanket motion that in managing the school district's properties, we will follow governmental guidance with respect to health and safety, safety with respect to COVID-19.
I'll second it. You did make a motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Ann seconded.
Thank you.
All right, discussion around that piece?
This is April. I'm sorry, I have a question. So, the motion says that the guidance will be followed, correct? April, I'm sorry, I have a question. So the motion says that the guidance will be followed, correct?
Guidance.
Okay, thank you.
So motion on the floor that the school properties and buildings will be managed in accordance with the guidelines set forth by governing bodies. Is that appropriate, Amy?
Yep.
All right, on a roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the motion carries.
Jean, this is, excuse me, Andy, this is Ann. I would like to make a motion, we have been at this meeting for four hours. And I would like to make a motion to have continuous this meeting until Tuesday, August 18th, excuse me, Tuesday, August 11th. There's quite a few items that we need to still carry to continue discussion on. And I don't think if we two, two, three more hours of this evening, that we would have a better decision.
Is there a second?
Once I take myself off mute.
All right, discussion around a continuance.
I'm not going to take back my second, but Ann, is your, is your motion really to adjourn like right this second and pick up again on Tuesday? Or are you just saying, really, we need to schedule a meeting on Tuesday? The reason I say that is because I would like to spend hopefully a half an hour or less discussing how tonight's meeting is going to be communicated out. Because I do feel like we failed in that department a couple of weeks ago.
And as far as discussion goes, I would, I would agree with that. I also, because we have resignations and nominations as far as non-public, I'm concerned with, with delaying that any longer than we need to. So as much as I really would like to go to bed, I'm, I'm not in favor of this motion.
Neither am I.
I just think that we have, we, I agree with Amy that we do need to have communication off. We did not articulate this information to our residents. But these, the rest of this agenda, I see us sitting here for three more hours. So how productive will we be for another three hours? There's plenty of meetings in the town that if it goes after 9:30, it was picked up at the next meeting.
Ann, I don't, I don't think we have time to, you know, as miserable as we all probably are sitting here on this, I don't think we have time to wait. You know, even if we call another meeting on Tuesday, it's, we're just pushing, pushing it down the road and we're getting too close to the start of the school year.
This is April. You know, thinking about this, I would be in favor of us, you know, maybe coming to a time period that we're going to stop. I think it's unrealistic for us to continue working. This could go into the wee hours. But I would not support that without at least agreeing to see the communication plan. It's on our agenda. It was on our agenda on Tuesday. And, you know, that is something that we do need to at least have exposure to. And the communication plan, that is a task according to a statute that's assigned to the superintendent. And I do think we need to give some kind of directive because there's a lot going on outside of this board hearsay, and we need to make sure that families and our community members are getting accurate information.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Yeah, I was going to call the question, please.
Yep. So a motion to suspend the meeting until, I'm sorry, Ann, did you say the next regularly scheduled meeting on the 18th?
Nope, August 11th.
August 11th, okay. On a roll call vote, Amy?
No.
Ann?
Yes.
April?
No.
Jean?
No.
And I'm a no.
This is April. I would like, I would like to make a motion that we call the meeting at 11 o'clock and, and to reconvene the following Tuesday.
I second that.
So discussion around that? My discussion piece, I just, you know, I'm not sure if we can tackle all these tonight. I'm, I'm not sure if the public feels like there have been enough answers tonight. I don't know. I, I, I'm not sure if the administration feels like there are enough answers tonight. I'm, I'm just really concerned about not getting this done. I'm really concerned about scheduling more and more meetings. I get that it's late. I'm right there with you. I, I just, I think we need to bang some of this stuff out.
I think the elephant in the room is, and a lot of people have tuned in because they would like to know, is anyone going to call for reconsideration of starting this school year remotely? And I think if we could, you know, maybe address that, we're going to answer some of the questions that people have tonight who are attending this meeting.
So there's a motion on the floor to suspend the meeting at 11 o'clock if business is not finished. On a roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Ann? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a no, motion carries. All right, so. Yes.
I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to rescind and amend the school's 100% remote opening on, we made on, let me try that again. I move, rescind and amend the vote to open schools 100% remote that the school board made on July 21st.
Can that be seconded by someone who did not vote in the majority?
I believe so. I believe that one of the person, one of the people that was in the majority needs to make the motion. I believe it can be seconded by anybody.
Okay, this is April. I will second that motion.
All right, discussion.
I guess I got lost somewhere along the way. I thought that the motion for the staff to deliver remote video in our internet-based education instruction and support while physically present on campus at a school district property was a refinement of the vote on the 21st. So that we were giving more direction to the school, to the administration and the teachers, putting together the plans that they would be able to focus on one plan and know what that's like. So I'm, I'm lost.
I took that to mean that if remote, if remote teaching were the model, that staff would be required to be on school property. So whether it's right now or whether it's in November, we've just clarified that portion of, you know, where staff would be.
That's not, as far as I understand, I'm right there with Amy. The motion was not worded in such a way that it said in the case that we're learning remote, then they would provide education that way.
I have a question. Can, can Jean, can you say that again, the motion you made?
I move, we rescind and amend the vote to open schools 100% remote on July 21st, that the school board took on July 21st.
I move to vote.
Well, point of order, procedurally, the only motion that is allowed on our decision that we made on the 21st is a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider.
I understood Jean to be making a motion to reconsider.
And my, my wording may be off. I was going through Robert's rules, trying to see how to do it properly. So I came up with rescind and amend. So if it's reconsider, I move, we reconsider the vote, school board took to open schools 100% remote on July 21st.
Just, just to clarify, Jean, rescind and amend would be if you, if you then had an amendment to put forward, like rescind and amend to read as follows.
I have a point of order. This is April. I have a point of order question because as I was also researching Robert's rules, which we don't follow strictly, but kind of loosely, to reconsider would need to happen in the same meeting. And this is not the same meeting in which that decision was made.
I'd have to agree with April, that's what I that was part of it, yes.
Yeah, as April stated, we do not follow Robert's rules to the letters. There's no expectation that we follow Robert's rules to the letter. If there is a policy that we can't do that, we have the ability to amend the policy. So I'm certainly comfortable with somebody asking to reconsider the previous vote if they so choose.
Can we move the question, please?
Certainly. So a motion to reconsider the vote to open the school year 100% remote learning. So this is just a motion to reconsider. On a roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a no, the motion carries. All right, so now we don't have a plan.
I have another motion, Andy.
Go ahead.
All right. So I, I tried my best to write this properly. I move to open schools to in-person learning in the hybrid model presented tonight after a two-week remote model is after a two-week remote model beginning on August 31st, lasting at least one month, as long as all safety concerns can be addressed and Pembroke schools are in adherence to state and federal guidelines. This will be revisited after one month by the Pembroke School Board. That schools will begin hybrid education on September 14th, 2020. Does that make sense?
I think it made sense. There was one part I was hung up on. It sounded like you said two weeks of remote learning, but it also, I also thought you, I thought I heard you say that hybrid would commence after one month.
Oh, hybrid lasting. Okay, so I move to open schools, in-person learning in the hybrid model presented this evening, after two weeks of remote, of remote learning, comma, lasting at least one month, as long as all safety concerns can be addressed and Pembroke schools are in adherence to state and federal guidelines. This will be revisited after one month by the Pembroke School Board. School would begin in a hybrid model on September 14th, 2020, or yeah, 2020, forgetting what year it is.
This is Ann. I second his motion.
Sandy, do you, do you want Jean to email it to you if he has it electronically?
I don't.
Yes, please.
Okay, well, let's, we'll see if it passes. If it passes, then Jean will get it to you. So discussion. Jean, I just, I'm not fair to be dense. I just really want to make sure that I follow you. Now that the motion's on the table and has been seconded, can, can you give it to me in plain language, not, not motion language?
Okay, so basically, we would open the schools as we previously discussed for the first two weeks remotely. Allowing the, the teachers and the students to meet, you know, in, in the remote model. My hope during that remote model would be that education would be part of that model, but another portion of that would be, for lack of a better term, well, passing along the expectations that the school has to both the parents and the students when they return in person, as far as social distancing goes, masks go, cleanliness, you know, hygiene, along those lines. So everybody is, all parties are well aware of what is expected when the students step into the school building. So that two-week model beginning August 31st, at the end of that, which would be September 14th, we would go to hybrid. That hybrid would be, would last at least one month, at which point we as a board would revisit, see how it's working, if we have to tweak it, if everything is good, if we have to pull the kids back out of school. You know, and that doesn't mean we have, you know, probably shouldn't have put in at least one month. If something changes and we have to close the schools down, then we should have the ability to do that.
Thanks. I think I understand it better. Discussion.
You know, one thing that I really need to know, and that is not clear to me, is the hybrid option. I don't feel like that clearly defines what's happening. We've heard two different models of what is hybrid. So I can't support something that says hybrid because what is that? Is that a blended learning model? Is that partial on campus with independent learning? Without that clarification, I cannot support hybrid alone. And I also will not support an option that does not provide a off-campus learning option for our students who are not comfortable returning to campus at this time.
I do, I do need to amend that motion because that was supposed to be included, April. I apologize. We need to, you know, the original motion with an option of full remote learning for students, for parents who deem that their students need to be included in that model.
This is April again. I may can get behind that if I can get a clear definition of what hybrid is. And that's something that I don't have right now.
Jean, didn't you say in your very first articulation, as presented tonight, which I understood to mean according to the reentry plan that we received last week?
Well, I was basing it on the reentry plan we discussed this evening. After going through it, not two weeks ago. I did not, I voted at that point, two weeks ago, because that plan was not detailed enough. At that point.
I'm talking about the, you know, 117-page document that does a school by school by school, each of the remote, hybrid, full-time learning. That's the plan that you're talking about, right?
Correct.
Okay. So April, I don't know if that satisfies your question.
I'm sorry, would you say that once again?
I don't know if, if that clarification that the hybrid that Jean is talking about is the model as written in the 117-page Pembroke School District reentry plan for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. The language in that was not clear to me, and that is the question that I came to this meeting with was I need a clear definition on what is a hybrid? And I, looking at this, I didn't walk away with that.
For my sake, with the amended language that includes a remote option provided by Pembroke schools to the best of their ability, I think that I could get behind this plan. I think that having a two-week remote period to start is valuable in a lot of ways. It gives us a couple of weeks to see what happens in other schools in our area and makes us not the guinea pig. It also prepares both instructors and students to understand how remote learning is going to work this year in what I would consider the probable case that in October, November or something, we end up having to utilize a remote model in full. So I think dipping toes in the water for a couple of weeks on remote to give more time to plan out for hybrid and to acclimate students and, and staff as to how remote works is a good idea. I think that hybrid after that, I mean, to be perfectly honest, so that everybody knows where I stand and I'm, I'm justifying my thoughts, I still do believe that remote learning is the safest. I do believe that remote learning is the most consistent and it would still be my preference. I also want to state right now, because I wanted to get it in at some point, this is as good as any. I do think that Pembroke, the administration, the board should be as forward-thinking as we can be. It would not surprise me if when we're done with this virus, at least parts of remote learning, if not actual remote curriculum, may be a thing that's here to stay. So I just urge administration and the board to consider that. Um, so I just urge administration and the board to consider that. You know, we heard Ms. Gersha talk about um, certain special ed-type meetings that people have really loved the flexibility of being able to do it remotely. I would encourage the administration to, you know, kind of think of which of these pieces we can hold on to, even post-COVID. So I do think that fully remote is the safest and most consistent method, um, but I do understand that a lot of community members have reached out and said that they would prefer a hybrid. Um, I have, as I'm sure, as, as the administration has said tonight, I have a myriad of concerns with the logistics of a hybrid model. Um, but I also trust that, that our administration is up to the task of making it work the best that we can. I do have real issues around staffing. So, but anyway, I, I think that as amended to include a remote option from Pembroke Schools, um, I would, I would support this motion. Sorry, that was rambling. I apologize.
This is, this is Amy. Well, thank you, Andy, for the rambling, your word, not mine, um, because I share just about every single thing that you said, and so I'm not going to repeat any of that, um, but I, I really do echo a lot of your thoughts. I like, I can get behind this motion as well, um, with one small caveat, which I'll address in a minute. I do like, my understanding is that this also answers another question, which I think is prominent on people's minds, which is regardless of, you know, remote or hybrid, what is the first day of school? And I understand in your motion, the first day of school is 8:31, so I like that that question is answered. The one thing that I am extremely uncomfortable about with this motion, but if, if we're willing to work on it in the future, I'm good, is the mode change criteria. So I really hope that by September 14th, we have a clear, written, board-approved document that tells us the checklist for being able to stay in hybrid or move to full-time in person or move to remote. I do not want to be winging it on those conversations. I don't want to find out on, you know, September 17th that, you know, little Bobby's mother has COVID, and now what do we do? I really think it's very important, and so when we're done with this motion, um, I'd like to make a motion to the extent that this wasn't included in the motion about stopping at 11:00. I'd like to make a motion that we meet on, um, Tuesday, the 11th, and that we focus on this, um, mode change criteria as well as communication plan.
Andy, this is April. Just so that I'm able to, um, clearly understand what hybrid means, would you please ask our superintendent to articulately describe what does the, um, off-campus instruction look like for our children in a hybrid model? Is it independent learning? Is it remote learning where they're going to have a teacher in front of them on a screen? Thank you.
Patty, I guess I'll, I'll let you respond. It's my understanding that that is not a concrete answer. And Mr. Morris said that even from class to class and assignment to assignment, that could be, um, variable. But I, she asked you, so I'll let you respond.
Sure. There absolutely will be variables, just as Mr. Morris, um, described. Generally, though, the hybrid model would mean that students were home, accessing materials that their teacher had sent them with, or depending on grade levels, maybe posted in Google Classroom for them um, on some different type of platform, but they would not have direct access, um, with their teacher on the remote days, unless there was a circumstance like Mr. Morris described.
Thank you, and I know we're under a time limit. One other clarifying question. In that motion, is, is it to be understood that both a hybrid model education and a remote model education, that would be education that is provided directly by the Pembroke School District?
Oh, your founder?
As opposed to be left?
Uh, I had a diff-, uh, another motion to that effect, April.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Okay, so can we move the question?
Um, yeah, I, I'm going to call for discussion one more time, just because this is a really big issue. Are there any last questions, comments before we take a vote? All right, so, uh, I'm going to paraphrase the motion. If I don't capture the intent, Gene, please correct me. There's a motion on the floor to begin school on August 31st in a fully remote model for two weeks, then transferring to a hybrid model as described, um, in the plans and presentation from tonight, um, for a period not shorter than one month. And before that date arrives, the school board will reconsider, and a remote option will be provided. Is that accurate?
Yes.
All right, on a roll call vote, Anne?
I'm sorry, Andy. I didn't think Gene said no lo-, no shorter than one month. Did, did you, Gene?
Um, I said at least one month.
Oh, okay.
Or lasting, yeah, lasting at least one month.
Thank you. Uh, Anne votes yes.
Uh, Amy?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
An M and S.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we meet on Tuesday, the 11th, with agenda items including the, um, mode change criteria and the communication plan.
Um, I will, oh, sorry, I'll wait. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Just a question, i- if we may, Amy, would you consider possibly adding as an agenda item the policies that the school board needs to address to support remote learning?
Yeah, actually, um, my phrasing was including those two items, so I didn't mean to exclude any other topics and would defer to the chair to finish the rest of the agenda. I just feel really strongly that those two things need to be included.
Thank you. Policy's not on the agenda, so that's why I'm asking that we be able to address that and move forward. Thank you.
Patty, am I correct in my understanding that you will not be available next week?
That is correct. Um, as of right now, I can, are you going to do a remote meeting?
That would be my intention, yes.
Um, I can see what I can do and let you know tomorrow.
So I, I guess I'll just ask, are you, would you be comfortable with us meeting with administration without you present? Or could we ask Peter to join, or is that not, be honest, I, I want to know.
Yeah, I mean, I, we'll, we'll make something work.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a, um, a quick question about the motion. When, um, Amy mentioned communications, I really would like to address some of the communications this evening. Um, we are not communicating at all with our, with our families, with our residents. We're putting it on the school webpage, but we have an SAU 53 Pembroke page that the last communication item was there was 3/7/2000, I mean, 2020. So I understand the communications information, but I would like to leave this meeting with actual directions to Patty on what to post on these communications.
Yep, um, so I, I think we need to, we need to handle the motion on the floor first, but just so everybody's aware, I added the bullet point for communication plan to tonight's meeting. It did not come from administration. It's something that I wanted to talk about, and just like you said, give them some direction, um, because I think we all have higher expectations moving forward than how communication has been thus far. Um, so it wasn't, I just want everyone to understand that wasn't something that Patty put on there, and it was bringing us a plan tonight. It's something that I put on because I wanted to have exactly the discussion that you just mentioned, Anne.
Excellent.
Um, I'm, I'm trying to think creatively in how to get everything done, you know, all at once, and I've come up with an idea that I wanted to float by the rest of the board, which is that we give more work to our chair and, um, close the evening tonight with a motion to authorize him to work with the superintendent in the next 24 hours to push out communications about tonight's meeting as, as best as they can. You know, basically, we'd be asking Andy to work with Patty to, you know, roll out the, the meeting, the news of this meeting better than we did last time, rather than all of us trying to figure out exactly what that looks like tonight, um, you know, at approaching 11 o'clock.
Amy, I agree with you, uh, but I would like to have this 117 pages added to the SAU 53 Pembroke communication page. Um, it, I, it could be done tonight, could be done tomorrow.
So, so I'm not sure we need a motion for that detail, Anne, as long as, you know, Andy, if you'll accept this mission and, you know, commit to getting that done, um, maybe we can leave it at that.
I would volunteer my time if Andy doesn't have, um, availability.
I'm comfortable doing it if you guys are, if you guys want to go that way. I think it's a reasonable plan so that we can get something done for tonight, and we can discuss more in depth, um, next week.
I did not see, um, a communication plan in our folder. Um, it would be nice for us to have whatever that is, that was part of the guidance from the DOE, so that we have a chance to review that and come to the table prepared to discuss it. Um, so I would like to have the communication plan that's drafted in our file at least two business days before our next school board meeting. I'm not sure how my boardmates feel about that.
I would agree, any documentation that, that the SAU or the district has as far as communication, um, that they can provide to us before the next meeting, uh, you know, a couple of days before the next meeting, I would definitely like to read through that as well. Um, but we do have, I think we're getting off topic here. We do have a motion on the floor that seconded to, um, schedule a board meeting for next Tuesday at 6:30. Um, is there any particular discussion about that before I call the vote? All right, on a roll call vote to schedule an additional school board meeting for, I gotta find a calendar. Thank you, August, Tuesday, August 11th at 6:30 PM, um, with the intention of it being a remote meeting. I'm sorry, that wasn't in the motion. So scheduling a school board meeting for, um, Tuesday, August 11th. Um, Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
An M and S. That's good, that's done, um.
Am I going to offend anyone if I say motion to adjourn?
I, I'm, I will push back.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I didn't make that motion. I forgot we have, um, need for non-public.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned with as much flux as there is in schools right now, that if we don't take care of a nomination, that we might lose a candidate. So if there's any way that we can go to non-public, um, before we.
I move to go to non-public pursuant to RSA 91A. Please, someone fill it in for me.
Can't the candidate wait till Tuesday?
I mean, I have no idea if they can or not. I'm just trying to be considerate of, uh, you know, I've, I've been, I've been the spouse of a person applying to jobs at schools and, um, you know, I don't know. I would hate for there to be multiple offers and us not be able to fill a position, especially when we're already talking about trying to staff in-person buildings and remote stuff. Um, I, I don't have any knowledge, Anne. It's just a concern of mine.
My concern is, as a board, we agreed to, um, pause the meeting at 11 o'clock, and I'm not sure that we could take care of that business in six minutes. That's April speaking, by the way.
Able to in the past, and I understand there's only one matter that we need to take care of in non-public.
There was a motion. Did, um, was there a second to any of these motions?
Second?
No.
What? I, I would just ask Andy, I'm sorry.
Amy made a motion to go into non-public. I needed a second if I was going to take a vote on it.
I have a comment. There's nothing on the agenda saying that there is a non-public, and what information are we going to discuss? Is it in our drive?
Uh, I believe that there are documents in the drive. I, I talked about it at the beginning of the meeting. Um, it didn't make the agenda because we didn't know at the time. Um, we're not legally obligated to follow the agenda word. It was a last-minute addition.
But I'll, I'll second that.
All right, so we can at least take it to a vote. Uh, there's a motion to enter a non-public session at 10:56 PM. Gene?
Yes.
Amy? Didn't hear you, sorry.
Yes.
Anne?
No.
April?
No.
I'm a yes. Um, so we're going to enter a non-public session at 10:56 PM. Chris, if you can.